We are.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, well, we're just waiting a moment for one of our council members.
Um, she just forgot it was at 1:30, but she's leaving and she's on her way, so.
Okay, well, we're gonna start anyway, so, all right, well, we're gonna go back and forth, we'll, we can talk without our mask, but what I'd ask is that while people are presenting or whatever, whenever we're not engaged in conversation, we'll try to make the best use of it when we can.
Yep.
So I'm gonna go ahead and call this town council workshop to order. And again, the purpose here is to understand Kiowa Partners' plans for the undeveloped portion of, the remaining undeveloped portion of parcel thirteen, and a request that is pending to modify the development agreement between the town and Kiowa Partners to allow for a change in the maximum number of units per building. This issue is very similar to the conversation and discussions we had about a year ago with respect to the other portion of parcel thirteen. The reason I set this up as a workshop were a couple of reasons. One, I know that all of the council members are informally aware of the issue and to some extent have been grieved on this individually, but I wanted to, first of all, make sure that we had an opportunity as a group to be able to discuss this, which we can only do in open session, and also to make sure that the public was aware prior to us acting on this at a future meeting, was aware of the proposal. The reason I set it up as a workshop as opposed to part of our normal meeting is simply, again, this is for anybody watching, this is the first time in what, about five months that we have gotten together as a group and not been zooming. Obviously, I'm unsure about how that's gonna work and what kind of participation we would have from the public, and I did wanna make sure that in case there were, because we don't want, we can't handle a lot of people in this room, if there were a number of people who were interested in this topic, we wanted them the ability to come in, listen to that, and then be able to leave if they weren't interested in the rest of the council agenda. So that's why we separated this. So we have about a half hour or as long as we need for this discussion, and then we'll just commence the town council meeting once we've completed. So, Mark, I'm gonna turn this over to you in the, again, or maybe I'm not turning it over to you, maybe I'm turning it over to John, but again, this is a workshop, there's no action being taken, we're not making any decisions. This is an opportunity for us to, again, as a group, understand what's being proposed, the issues, ask questions, and then based upon what comes of that, this then could be on the agenda for action either at the November or December meetings. This is an important piece of property, too. I think we know from the earlier discussions around the other portion of parcel thirteen that Kiowa is nearing the end of its development, certainly not the end of its building, but the end of its development. This is a very large piece of property, it's a beautiful piece of property close to the ocean, and it is also part of the island that has been, under the development agreement, always established for some of the highest potential density. So it is of interest what we do there, and I think we all need to think about this and understand all the implications. So with that, I will be quiet, I guess I'm gonna turn over to John Taylor.
Yeah, I won't.
Our planning supervisor, and then, Mark, I assume that you will also be then presenting.
I just wanted to highlight a few of the documents that you already have in your possession before Mark comes, which was just kind of a summary of what's being proposed today, and Mark is gonna go through more of the detail in the actual application, but you should've just received a, an area of, to be. Yeah.
Oh, I get, okay.
So I just wanted to let you know it was actually specific to this site, that's north of Southern Pines Lane, Duneside Road across from Timbers, and so, just a few notes. It is zone R3 slash commercial, and before Mark comes, these are just some of the unique characteristics that are highlighted. Remember that there was an agreement between Kiowa Partners and the community association that established restrictive development patterns for the area, the entire parcel thirteen, and how that's accessed, and so, that's referenced in this document as part of your materials, and I will allow Mark to take it from there. I think those are just some of the things I wanted to highlight as, to kind of recall how we got to where we are now.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Oops, sorry about that.
You just used that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, and members of council, and those attending the meeting today, my name's Mark Primar, I'm here representing Kiowa Partners, one of the cosigners to the development agreement, the original development agreement started in nineteen ninety-four, and a series of updates of the development agreement have occurred since then. The one that is active now is the one that we're seeking, a very narrow and specific amendment to the text of that agreement. But what I'd like to do, if it's all right, there, I only have a couple of slides here that maybe provide some backdrop or layers of information to this request. The first one is a somewhat annotated and color-coded, colors are quite different on the two here, but between the, of the plat, that first shares with you the overall unit count or density analysis. Parcel thirteen is composed of lots one, two, three, and that extended right-of-way of Duneside Road that ends in a cul-de-sac ultimately. That's a plat that the planning commission approved prior to the submission.
Mark, just an aside, are you guys gonna change the name, or what are you gonna ultimately do, are you gonna call that Duneside instead of Southern Pines?
Yeah, I, I.
There's nothing to do with this, but I'm just curious.
The keeper of names, but technically, you're right, Duneside Road ends right now, the area that we're familiar with, and through the plating process, that portion that was then to the west is Southern Pines Lane or something. I think ultimately, the whole street should be named Duneside Lane, so that there's no confusion by someone driving on it, but physically, it's one road.
Right, that's why, that's why I wondered whether you were gonna potentially name it.
Right, yeah.
Although I guess you have to go in and redo the deeds on twenty-one Timbers properties if you did that, wouldn't you?
Right.
Yeah.
But with all that, would be approved and corrected for emergency vehicles and other people, you know, postal system and so forth.
Okay.
The whole of parcel thirteen allowed for up to two-hundred-and-thirty-four development units total, if you were to max that out. It has split zoning of R3 and/or commercial zoning. Fundamentally, we're always talking about the R3 category. I think I mentioned this in a prior town council meeting, I'd love to have a Starbucks on the ocean there that would be part of the commercial, but it's gonna be a residential zone in its entirety. Now, the reason this graphic is sort of important is each time a sub parcel was conveyed to a third party, the first one being Lot Three conveyed to Timbers to do Timbers-Kiowa, there was an allocation of the entitled number of units. They were allocated twenty-one development units to Lot Three. In a similar fashion, when East-West Partners purchased Lot Two, they were conveyed up to eighty-four dwelling units. So from a math word exercise, the remaining allowable entitled units on Lot One are a hundred-and-twenty-nine. I only say that because we're proposing an adjustment to that, to reduce that, but that's one level in terms of the town's overview. If many of you remember, when there was concern about extending Duneside Road, or its name that it exists now, there was an agreement worked out with the community association, with the, with a lot of the influence and input from property owners in the immediate area, that there should only be a certain number of additional units that are accessed from fundamentally inside the gate in these future areas. That was where, that's the color area, that's like an additional level of information to add more confusion. On the combination of Lot Two and the green area of Lot One, there can be no more than a hundred-and-twenty units that can be accessed from Duneside Road. The reason that's important is, I'll share with you at a later date, the potential impact of future traffic on Beach Walker Drive. How many cars could be on Beach Walker Drive? But, so I hope that wasn't too confusing, but those are both the requirement of the town in terms of limitations, and then this additional layer of a commitment in writing with the community association, there can be so many access from Duneside Road.
And remind me, Mark, maybe this question for John, when, even though that was a KICA negotiated access agreement, wasn't, was that incorporated into the plat also as a restriction on the plat? So it is also a restriction on?
You're right, it was a condition of plat approval, so it's in the record.
So it's in the.
If all of us in this room are gone.
So it goes beyond KICA now?
It outlives us in terms of a commitment for property owners, so that everyone would know that and understand that. If I could go, does it show up okay on the screen? Okay.
Yeah.
So this graphic is a little bit more representative of kind of where we're at today. Obviously, Timbers has been built, the three buildings, the residential towers, a total of twenty-one units, and then they have two additional buildings on their site, which are the amenity, and then if you're familiar with it, the check-in location where they, you know, they provide, it's like an onsite, isolated area for all its members or whoever the guests are. The drawing to the left on number two, I wanna make certain that this is a conceptual master plan presented by East-West Partners. They're still in the process of refining their plans, I think the town is involved in updates on a regular basis, but this genuinely represents how they would distribute their allowance of units, and that is six buildings, and if you remember, the precursor to this amendment was a similar amendment about a year ago, as the mayor indicated, where there was an adjustment to the text only for Lot Two, it was only Lot Two, in which an allowance of up to twenty units in a building, for no more than two buildings, up to twelve units per building for another two buildings, and then the remaining buildings could go no larger than eight units in a building. The idea, the thrust of the idea in the application was to allow for more flexibility of shaping the buildings, so there's more space between buildings. It actually results in more open space by doing that. Also embedded in that was a future West End Beach Club that's part of the club, which has been long promised for many years, it was integrated within this. In addition to those restrictions of how you could articulate the number of units in a building, there were also varied height standards. The last thing we wanted as a community was to have a wall of buildings all along the ocean, so there was a hierarchy of height limits within it, too. Now, Lot One is similar zoning as all the other sites, an R3 or a C zoning classification. Building height limit is the same as on the other sites, no more than four habitable floors above parking, let's say, but four habitable floors, and I mentioned to you that's sort of a math word exercise of a hundred-and-twenty-nine units. The last item is maximum number of dwelling units in a building can be no more than seven units in a building. That's what Timbers is, quite frankly, you have three floors of two each, and then the top floor is a penthouse, for a total of seven within a building. We are seeking relief from that to allow for more flexibility, similar to East-West. We're not as far along on the planning process, but the next slide, the next slide is one of multiple test studies that I did of how you could articulate where buildings are located on Lot One. So don't take this as a, we're presenting a plan for approval on the plan part, but what I wanna represent is, the idea is to seek some relief, not as aggressive as the East-West, because that's oceanfront, it has different pressures associated with it, but we are requesting that on this site, that we have up to two buildings that could have fourteen units in them, and up to two buildings more that could have ten units in them, and then the remaining number of buildings could be no more than eight. We believe that how that could be articulated in this location, this'll tend to have a little bit higher percentage of two and three bedrooms, whereas the oceanfront tends to have more three and four bedrooms in terms of how it's composed, and we believe that that has merit to it. Now, in addition to that specific request, this is a little harder to see, I don't know if, on this graphic, on Lot One, you'll see a red dashed line that's like the extended common property line between Lot Three and the development to the east of it, it's Duneside Road. Oh, yeah, I can show it on the screen up here. So if you were to extend that property line further north, all the way to Beach Walker Drive, we are also, as a part of our submission to you, that that zone should be reduced in height from four stories to three stories, and that's in deference to what is existing development around that. So you have Duneside on the ocean side, those are actually three-story townhouses, then you have the cottage owner's little pool area immediately to the east, and then cottages of Sparrow Pond and Inlet Cove that sort of wrap around there. So the idea is to restrict the height from four stories, to reduce it at least one story in that location, as a recognition of proximity to the units in that location. The other exhibit here, which is a little harder to read, but this is clarification with greater detail than what presently exists in the development agreement, by sub parcel of what all these allowances would be. So what I'd like to do is just sort of end at that point, 'cause I know we only have so much time today to answer any questions, but the part I wanna reinforce is this is a very specific, narrow request of seeking relief to the number of units in a building, to what I outlined, and in recognition of that, we would reduce the height in one specific area, and in finality, there's a hundred-and-twenty-nine units presently allowed on that site, reduce that to one-hundred units, there can be no more than one-hundred units on that site. The combination of those, we believe, provide flexibility for the owner developer to proceed with development planning studies that would still have to go through all of the process that we're all familiar with, and as a sidebar, it will also take additional pressure off of increased traffic that ultimately would be going onto Beach Walker Drive, the combination of those things. So, as I said, let me just stop at that point and address any specific questions.
Yeah, can you go back to the slide where you show two buildings at fourteen, I think two at twelve, with two at ten?
Right.
If I add those numbers up, I come up with eighty-four.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, you're talking about my, this conceptual plan?
Yeah, so that tells me, you know, you're showing ten buildings, I understand it's conceptual, so you would probably have more than ten buildings, would be my guess, is that correct?
We would, we're submitting, we would have no more than ten buildings, number one. And as I said, I don't wanna represent that this is the ultimate plan, because what would probably happen is buildings would join together, instead of ten separate buildings, you could have buildings join together to allow for that, which then increases open space, but then you can finesse because of the orientation of buildings and how they would be, and I used building types that were existing in the East-West parcel.
Yeah, I noticed.
We're actually looking at tighter buildings, smaller buildings, 'cause of the higher count of two-bedroom units within it.
Yeah, I, but I'm.
But you're right, you're right.
I might be confused, really, if you stay with ten buildings, you can't get above eighty-four units, because you've got maximum two buildings at fourteen, two at ten, and then six at eight.
Well, I, we, I can, I would take that as a great challenge, by the way. I can, because.
You get ninety-two.
This is addressing multifamily buildings, so you could have compression of buildings and maybe result in six buildings total, and then portion of the site, one consideration is a portion of the site near the pool area might be townhouses, they might be a different building type, but if you, you're absolutely correct, if you were to freeze that conceptual master plan and optimize it per the request, you would only, you would only get up to eighty-four, I forget the math.
I think it's ninety-two now that I do the math again, but.
That's ninety-six. Whereas right now, if you were to live within the confines of the existing entitlements, it's seventy, right? Ten buildings, seven per, under the existing.
I got you.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, I know at one time you intended to.
Mr. Mayor. Pull your mask down.
Can't hear me? At one time you had intended to reach out to some of the surrounding.
Yes.
Neighborhoods, either directly to residents, or I think more to their HOAs or regime groups. Have you had the chance to do that, and what has been the feedback?
Yes, I shared the first three slides that I've shared with you, which shows, just to go back through it again, I shared this slide where I walked them through the density question, I shared this slide where I shared with them the other development standards, and then I also shared with them this, you know, study case and so forth. First and foremost, I thought my mission was to be clear and succinct about what the request is, not try to sell it, just, and I would like to think that if a property owner that attended one of the two meetings that I had, the first one being with the Duneside One and Two representatives, and Greenslake and Sparrow Pond Cottage owner, it was that group first, and then the second one was within Inlet Cove Board, I actually think it was the full board and their property manager. I would like to think that if they were asked, that I at least answered, you know, presented it clearly and answered their questions, I don't wanna represent one way or the other, whether they embraced it or rejected it or whatever, both conversations were really good about, well, what is this, what does it mean? The people that were associated with Duneside One and Two and the cottage owners, they're, they've been in sync for quite a while about development in that area. For Inlet Cove, it was the new, that was new and fresh to them. Their particular area of concern that I would share is additional traffic on Beach Walker Drive.
Which is, which has always been their issue, and that was their issue with East-West.
An impact associated with, you know, we have a, it's part of the master leisure trail system through there, and it's crossover for Inlet Cove, in fact, let me share with you here, there was an additional beach access provided here and a new access along the western side of cottage owner's pool area as a part of that agreement with KICA that improved their access, but their principal concern, their principal concern was in two areas, traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian on Beach Walker Drive, and where is the entrance gonna be for this upper portion in here? Where is that gonna be? And the way I answered that was, we don't know yet, what I represented in this test case was to move it as far east as possible to stay clear of the new lane into PRC that the town added last year, to stay, try to stay clear of that, and their concern was, in addition to just more traffic on Beach Walker, their concern was headlights going out at night, going out that way.
But importantly, if those are the, and again, those are not unimportant issues, they are important issues, but ultimately, your, the partners' entitlements on this property already allow that level of occupancy, so what you're asking us to do doesn't make that more or less of, I mean, doesn't aggravate, aggravate the traffic issues, because if anything, you're reducing from one-twenty-nine to one-hundred the potential properties.
Right.
But with respect to the larger buildings, the reduced height by the Sparrow Pond, they understood all of that.
Right, I don't wanna diminish their concerns, to be honest with you, but as of today, we theoretically, and there's a way to put a hundred-and-twenty-nine units on here, by the way, but that wouldn't be responsible, but there is a way to do that, and we would have a hundred-and-twenty-nine trips generated from units there, whereas under the proposal, it would be immediately dropped to one-hundred, and if you then add that layer of the green map, some of those one-hundred are actually gonna be accessed, not off of Beach Walker Drive, but off of Duneside Road. So if you actually did the math on it, something closer to sixty-five or seventy units would be accessed off of Beach Walker Drive. But I, again, I don't wanna misrepresent any concern that would be registered by property owners in the area, we felt our role was to present and inform them about what this request was.
Well, importantly, what I wanted to be assured is that those conversations have taken place, and if they have, at least at this point, I don't know whether any other council members have had anybody reach out to them, but at this point, I've not had anybody from Duneside, Sparrow Pond, or Inlet Cove, and I don't know, I'm asking our town administrator whether she has gotten any, but I haven't had any as a result of that, where people have raised an objection, so. Again, I wanna make sure everybody's comfortable that they understand what's being recommended, what's being recommended of, or what's being asked of the town, other questions?
Good.
There, just for the council's background, while it's not a directly a part of this request, one of the concerns that I know the town administrator, Stephanie and I have both are, which again is an issue that exists regardless of what we do here, is the potential impact of this development of parcel thirteen, the total parcel development on our infrastructure on Beach Walker, and specifically two things. One is the bike path, I mean, we all know that pedestrian pass and bike pass have become a really major part of this community now, both for our residents, but also for the tourism side of the industry. The truck to Freshfields has become a major issue, and clearly, the bike path today that extends from the real estate center to Beach Walker Park, while it's fit for purpose for Inlet Cove, which is right now the only thing there, it isn't likely to hold up and be appropriate for this amount of development, and I think one of the discussions that we've asked is to, while we're dealing with this issue, is to try to think ahead on what the implications may be for the town with respect to eventually in the future needing to improve, widen, or otherwise deal with the ability of that bike path to handle a higher capacity, which it will need to. And also, while I don't anticipate that Beach Walker Road itself will ever need to be expanded, I can envision that someday we may find that the intersection itself is problematic in terms of whether we need a left-turn lane, a dedicated left and right-turn lane or whatever, so I do think it would be helpful if we think through those issues now and evaluate whether there's an opportunity for the town and the developer to think ahead in terms of what the impact of this total development will be and how we may want to participate and share the responsibility for dealing with that in the future.
And just for the council's information, I think those conversations are taking place, so.
Well, fortunately, we have a right-of-way there that's wider than normal, it's an eighty-foot right-of-way, but you're correct, I mean, we, and I think we've indicated a willingness to collaborate with all those that can make it better, make things better in that area. We have learned. We, we have learned some things with the pedestrian trail improvements along Duneside Road, where for the first time on Kiowa, we've introduced raised panels for leisure trails so that they're more dominant, and called out with signage. I think there's some lessons learned in that, but, but it's, it's a greater, it's a greater issue. We would agree with that.
Yeah, and I, and clearly, in the last, you know, two years ago, I think the town made a, a significant investment in the infrastructure there, dealing with the problems we had with, with the lineup of traffic at the park, and, and hopefully, the folks at Timbers are appreciative of that, because it's, it's certainly impacted their ability to get in and out, so.
Other questions?
So, the request of the partners would be, and I think you have, we have a copy between the next month that we can look at, of the specific potential amendment to the development agreement. And, and so we'll, we'll look in at, at potentially dealing with that in the November town council meeting.
Okay.
After, after I had an opportunity for the council.
We submitted a draft text and exhibits for your review, and are ready to respond to any questions between now and then.
Mark, thanks.
Okay.
John, you have anything to add on this?
No, the same draft you have, I'll, but we can leave that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
We got it.
All right. All right. So with that, I will adjourn the workshop, and does anybody need a minute or two minutes to grab a drink or a bathroom stop or anything? And we will, we will get going on Town Council. All right? And our audience has increased by one.
Or two.
But we're about to lose one.
But we're about to lose one, so it's.
I, I will say this, it's, it's unofficial now, right? I will say this, even though this is sort of diminished, it's nice to have something relatively normal.
Yeah.
I mean, really.
This is.
Nothing replace, my dad used to talk about walking the shop floor. There's nothing that replaces missing each other's body.
You're right.
Hopefully, we're closer to that.
It, it is an experiment, getting back to, to an open session, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mark. Thanks, John. All right, then I'm going to go ahead and call the town council meeting to order. If you notice, in order to minimize our interaction and talking and getting up, I, I took the pledge of allegiance off the agenda for today, but if anybody notices it's missing, that was, was why. So again, I'll call our town council meeting to order. First item of business is the approval of the minutes, and the first are, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the August twenty-six, two thousand and twenty town council meeting. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, with that, are there any comments, changes, edits? Anybody?
No.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then I have the approval of the minutes of the September first town council meeting. Again, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. And again, any changes, edits?
No.
Anybody? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, mayor's update. I actually have a number of thi-, just a number of things to, since we haven't had the opportunity to really meet in person, it's nice to see everybody. I do have some, a few different things that I just want to make the council members all, bring them all up to date, as well as the public. First thing, most important, you saw the announcement that I think was sent out on Friday, that the date for candidates for the December one town council election closed on Friday. We have two candidates for mayor, Klaus Side, sitting here at our table, and also John Labrioli, I think, I think most or many of us know John.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. Certainly, the former mayor sitting in the audience does. So we have two candidates for the mayor position. As you recall, as part of our move to four-year staggered terms, we are this year having two seats for the four-year term and two seats for the two-year term. We have two candidates that are for the four-year council term, Scott Parker and John Moffett. Both Scott and John are involved today with town committees. John is on the planning commission, and Scott is on BZA. Did I get that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so that is essentially an uncontested election, two candidates and two, two seats. And then for the, for the two-year council term, which then in two years, when that expires, will become a four-year, a four-year term. We have three candidates for the two seats. We have Mary Ann Connolly, Dan Prickett, and John Ross. John, I do not know. He is on the audit committee, and with COVID, the last year I haven't, committees haven't always been meeting in person, I haven't actually had the chance to meet John, I don't know. I guess you have, Carl.
Only by Zoom once, behind a mask.
So again, these are our candidates, and.
And Dan, did you mention Dan?
I did.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Didn't even notice him.
So, and I think the, we will be, as nor-, as usual, providing the town communication in the next, as part of the next town notes, that will provide the bios and information on all of the candidates. I did talk to Jimmy Bailey Friday to ask what KICA was thinking, you know, they have normally done a candidates night, obviously, the question with COVID and, and all of our ability to, inability to get in the same room. I expect that they will try to do something, especially since we have contested elections, they will try to do something, probably of a virtual nature. I have offered the opportunity to use this facility and our, our camera facilities and inability. It may work a little better than the setup that they have, so I'm, I'm pretty sure they will do something as they, as they have in the past. So again, want to make everybody aware of that. Second thing that I want to make the council aware of is Judge Straugh, who has been our municipal court judge for two terms, I think two, the first was a three-year term, and then a two-year term. His, his term is coming up for reappointment at the beginning of March, and, and John has informed me that he is not seeking a reappointment as judge. So we will be seeking a candidates to replace Judge Straugh. And when we get to, at the end of the meeting here, when Stephanie Tullerson does her town administrator update, she'll update the, the group on what we're envisioning in terms of the process for communicating this opening, getting comments, or getting candidates, evaluating, and so on. The, the thought is that what we will do is be in a position where either this council or the next council at their first meeting would already be in a position to appoint the new judge. So we'll start some of the, si-, if we assume there's more than one candidate, we'll start the process of, of evaluating candidates and interviewing, because what we would like to do is allow the new judge and Judge Straugh to actually parallel for about two months. So the thought is that we would be able to point that, that judge, let's say, at the new council's January, first meeting in January, and then have both of them operating together for, for two months, so that, that, that John can mentor the, the new judge, so. And, and while I know it's a long time before this transition takes place, since I've only got one more meeting, I, obviously, I, I just absolutely have to thank Judge Straugh for, he's been a tremendous job.
Terrific job.
He's been terrific, and, and the, his, the way he's been able here even in the last few months to handle this really unusual situation of holding court is, has been interesting. So I, again, appreciate everything that, that he's done. Similarly, or, I should say, on, on the other side of this, somebody who is staying on, as you all know, this, the, the St. John's Fire District has three commissioners who are, who represent the town on the St. John's Fire District Commission. They have four-year terms, they are staggered terms, and Bill Tome, who is, is finishing his first four-year term at the end of December, and he has asked to be reappointed to another four-year term. He's a glutton for punishment. But I'm, I'm pretty sure he wants to see, he's been very involved with the construction of the new, of the new stations, and I'm pretty sure he very much wants to be a part of the, of the finishing of, of the new one.
Excuse me, mayor, do those jobs get posted?
Well, that's what I'm about to say. No, they don't get, because we don't, we don't make the appointment.
Right.
The appointment is actually made by the governor, but at the recommendation of the county council, and the county council has traditionally asked for our input or preference on candidates. And we have, where we have not had a candidate, we have then traditionally publicized it to make sure that, that, that we were getting candidates that, that could apply. But in this case, hopefully I didn't overreach, Bill did indicate his desire to be reappointed, and so I have already gone forward and, and sent a letter to the county council indicating that, that we are supportive of, of his reappointment, so that that could go forward at their meeting. Usually, at their late November, early December, they'll, they'll handle that appointment. And I, I was comfortable doing that, I, I believe, based on my informal feedback over the last four years of, of everybody's comfort, as well as, as I know that Chief Walz is, is been always very happy and dependent upon, on Bill's involvement. Another thing you may have seen is that we are going to be hosting flu shot, we're working in conjunction with CVS, and we'll be hosting flu shots here at this building on October twenty-third, and I hope we have a, it's the first time, I think, for the town to try to reach out and, and, and host something like that, so hopefully we'll have good participation, and people are, they can sign up, you can sign up online if you haven't already.
We've done it.
And since there are obviously a lot of concerns about this year's flu season, I would hope that we get a good turnout. Just two more things. At the last meeting, I updated you on the work of the informal group who was focused on taking an initial shot at the adaptive management elements of sea level rise, and particularly putting together a survey that would go out to the public, to both resident and, to both resident and non-resident property owners. And that has gone through a lot of iterations. I think I sent all of the council members a draft of a version late last week, and I'm happy to say that we've been doing this in conjunction with KICA and the KICA board, we're, we're sort of jointly sponsoring this, and so I'm happy to say that the KICA board yesterday finally, or did put their blessing on it. So that survey is done, Stephanie Braswell's been integral also to actually creating the, the mechanics of the, the survey. So that, I don't know, Stephanie, do you know when that will actually go out?
She said it would go out this week.
This week?
Yeah, I just provided her the final.
Okay. And so hopefully, when you all got it, you took a look at it. I know a couple of you indicated, tried to go through and, and tested. And then finally, just before I came into the meeting, I got a, an email from the county. As it happens, recently, I think I had just talked to you all by email about some of the Johns Island Road issues, and I think everybody is aware of, of the Main Road Corridor projects, the project A, B, and C, which are projects which are tied to the half-cent sales tax. And project, I just got an email today that the project C is now going forward in the process of now getting community input. So, you know, if you, so by way of background, project A is essentially the Savannah Highway Main Road intersection plus the road to Bee's Ferry. That project has been underway for some time in terms of getting community input, trying to narrow down about twenty-five alternatives to twenty-two. I think that's about how they've gotten every year.
About seven now, I don't know.
They're down to about seven now. So that project has been underway in terms of trying to narrow down the project. Project B, which essentially starts a few hundred yards down from the River Road, Main Road intersection, to Maybank, that part of the project is essentially on indefinite hold. There's, there's no, there's no activity taking place right now, because I think there are questions long-term about the criticality of that, of that piece. And then the third C project is from the intersection of Maybank and, and Bow Hicket to the intersection of River and Betsy Harrison. So that piece is obviously of critical importance to Kiowa. I think it is, it is not only a, it, it's also a very complex issue, because that road has significant public safety issues, it has environmental issues, it has community cultural issues with respect to the impact upon residents and resident properties. So the, the understanding that I have is that the county will be opening up a, a project website on October twelfth at five in the morning, if somebody wants to get up at five in the morning and look at it. And as part of that, they will be doing online public information meetings, they will be providing information to learn about the project's purpose and need, review proposed alternatives, ask questions, submit comments. And I, again, obviously, I'll be leaving this group, but I do think, as I indicated to you all, you know, email the other day, the last couple of years have been kind of quiet on roads. This is an important issue, and I would really encourage that the next council really needs to, to particularly on this, this Bow Hicket main, Bow Hicket Road piece of it, be very involved. So Stephanie and I would, I'll give you this information, I think it ought to go out in a, in knee blast or something, and communicate publicly to. So that's it for, that is it for my comments, sorry for so many today. Citizens' comments, if we have any, feel free to come up to the podium. It doesn't look like we do. Charlie, anything?
All right.
So with no citizens' comments, let me move then to a presentation. Lauren, I want to introduce Lauren Rust. Lauren is with the Low Country Marine Mammoth Network, and just by way of introduction, I think everybody knows that when we put together this year's budget, we did reduce or essentially, I guess, eliminate the, the funding for, not for this year, but for next year, for, for the dolphin monitoring program that we have at Captain Sam Spit. We both had, obviously, an interest from Lauren and her organization for us to take another look at that funding, and I think probably all of us also received a number of emails, communications from our residents. There are a fairly large number of people who volunteer with that program. So I know that we're going to be looking at the budget, this is not a decision item today, but I know we're going to be evaluating our budget here again soon, and so what I'd asked Lauren is if she would come in and just spend a few minutes to help the council better understand what this program is all about, and, and give us understanding of, of what it does, how, how it works. I'd also like to make sure we have a good understanding of what the, the sort of resident volunteer involvement is. So that's why I've asked you, and I appreciate you coming in.
Sure. Do you mind if I take this off?
You go right ahead.
Okay. Well, thank you for having me today. Just think it's super important, thank you for the introduction. I will just go ahead and get started and try to keep this brief, but, so our education program is designed to provide education to the public. to provide education to the public, as well as encouraging onlookers to responsibly view strand feeding. As we, I'm sure you've all been down there, it's super rare, it's, it's an amazing behavior, and it's something, you know, that I feel, and I think the community feels, that we need to protect. So our main objectives are to engage visitors, so we try to approach most people. Obviously, things are a little bit different in COVID, but we approach most people, provide information, answer questions, point out, you know, the dolphins that are there. We're also collecting weather visitor and dolphin data, so individual animals, interactions, how often they're strand-feeding, where they're strand-feeding, which helps us manage our volunteers, and maybe where we're gonna, you know, stand or post signs. And then the main objective is to reduce harassment, so NOAA Fisheries defines harassment as basically any act, you know, there's a Level A, a Level B, we're gonna focus on Level B, the second part, so any basically human behavior that can affect behavioral patterns, including migration, breathing, nursing, or feeding. So, you know, you running up, running into the water, anything that alters them from what they were doing, whether it was feeding, swimming, nursing, and altering their behavior is technically called harassment. We like to refer to it as disturbance, so that's ultimately what we're trying to do, is reduce the public's chances of harassing dolphins. So the main thing is to keep people back, you know, keep them from running into the water. We've had people throwing things at them, sand, rocks, cast nets. You know, so trying to intercept basically, and, and kind of do a little crowd control with the public. So under the Marine Mammal Protection Act, it is illegal to touch, feed, swim with, engage, or harass wild dolphins. So that's the law. No swimming with, feeding, harassing, or touching. These are just, and we give these to all of our volunteers. Your town ordinances are no dogs, boats on shore, swimming or wading in the water. And then our recommendations are just to reduce those chances of people, again, interacting with the dolphins. We've come up with forty-five feet with land. That is not a law. It's a recommendation that we came together with NOAA. We do have a NOAA PI on this project. And then NOAA recommends a hundred and fifty feet from any vessel, including a kayak, paddleboard, or a boat. So this is just some of the data that we've collected over the last, we have a lot more data, but we're kind of in the middle of our season. But this is the visitor, so this is how many people we've spoken to over the last three full years that we've been out there. This program's been running about four summers, but three full years. So as you can see, our visitor count has increased significantly. I think the most important part, sorry, is this, is 2020. So that's only been since January, and we were shut down for, for two months. So this is only seven months of data. So up until the end of September, we've already spoken to more people than we spoke to all of last year, over a twelve-month period. So a pretty significant, I think, an increase, in that, you know, we still have several months left of this year of this project. So, and I've noticed that it's gotten, you know, busier. I think it's been busy over the pandemic, and I'm sure you all, I don't live on the island, I'm sure you all can agree with that. For example, yesterday I spoke, there were seventy-five people out there, and I looked at our data from last year, and we, we averaged about twenty people this time last year. So still a lot of people coming down there. So main thing, and so I just want to talk about the volunteers very quickly. We have about, well, thirty volunteers total. We do the same project on Seabrook. We have about fifteen, sixteen volunteers on Kiowa. And so what we do, we spend a, each day, volunteers down there to spend a four-hour shift, bracketing the low tide, so two hours before to two hours after low tide, when the dolphins are most active, and that's when the most people come down there. We post, we have about five of those signs that we post up at about forty-five feet back from the waterline, where we just, as a good visual for people to stand at. It also has kind of our recommendations and the law. And then we record, and then, you know, they're talking to everybody and recording all of that information.
Now, just if I could just make an observation. I don't know how much, how often the other council members are able to, to get down there. Two years ago, you, this crowd you have in this picture, two years ago, you wouldn't have seen that.
Correct.
And, and while this is probably one of the bigger ones, I mean, it is surprising in the summer how many people are there. And so one thing which I notice is that, and what you're not seeing are how many boats are in the water.
Right.
I mean, the boats are starting to look like a flotilla. But if the volunteers are not there, I would bet on, on average, you would probably see three to five of those people that are right there on the sand in the water.
Correct.
There's a propensity to want to wait and, to wait out there and, and think that they'll come up to you.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, on average, you know, we can talk to anybody, you know, from a few people, maybe in the winter, to over a hundred people in our four-hour shift is, is the most, a hundred and five or so, that we can talk to in a four-hour shift. Keeping in mind that's only a fraction of the people that day, because we're only there four hours of the total day, so people are obviously coming and going around that. And, you know, as you, as you mentioned, we do tell people about, you know, no dogs, no wading, so we are also offering that information to the guests that come down there. So human interactions is by far our biggest issue. I think I sent these to you earlier this year. These are not isolated incidences. Both of these people were, you know, interacting, the man on the top was, was, took a fish and was handing it to the dolphin, and then this fisherman, and I took all these images and witnessed all these, but he was feeding the dolphin his, he was a fisherman, he was feeding the dolphin his bait fish. So this is illegal and can be fined up to a hundred thousand dollars. These were reported just a little bit late, and, and the Beach Patrol did come and talk to both of these people. But this is most of what we see, so people just, and again, I took all these photos, so it's not that, you know, the dolphin happened to strand-feed at their feet, which definitely does happen. But in all these incidences, the people were chasing the dolphins. As you can see, most people are taking a picture, and it's very innocent, it's unattentional harm. But they're, you know, getting close, so if you can't see, there's a dolphin right here trying to strand-feed, and these, this crowd ran up to take pictures. Again, that's mostly what we see. It's, it's very innocent. We, it's very amazing to witness, and I, but having volunteers there is just asking people to still view it, but to be able to just view it a little bit further back. One of the main reasons is the dolphins can see us, and they are, you know, not saying, they're not used to humans, but they do often kind of check you out. And there have been times that we've seen, what we feel is that they do not strand-feed, because there's a group of people, there's people in the water, people chasing them, and so the dolphins are very, you know, in tune to that. And so, again, we're just asking them to stand back a little bit. Again, people getting into the water to take pictures. Kayaks are, you know, there was, I think, fifteen kayaks out there. I think it was maybe Friday. So a big number of kayaks, you know, and it's a very small inlet. And again, they were chasing the animals back and forth, not keeping that distance. We have worked with Kiowa, the resort, and, you know, Mango Point, and, and have done some trainings with them, and they do a great job about telling their staff what to tell their clients, you know, as far as kind of the distance and not to be touching them. But it's hard when there's, you know, fifty or sixty people on the beach, fifteen kayaks in the water, you have boat tours going on, you know, the dolphins are just kind of consistently bothered. And just additionally, you know, dolphins are, you know, threatened by oil spill diseases, contaminants, boat strikes, you know, the list goes on. So, you know, this is just one thing that I feel like we have a small bit of control over. And I'll talk a little bit more just about this local population, but, you know, I think this is something that we need to, if we can control, you know, they're already threatened by a number of different things just here in Charleston. So we do have three hundred and fifty resident dolphins, the ones that you see out here. They're all born and bred, live here year-round, sometimes up to forty years. As you can see, this is just an image of our, these are all the locations of just these estuary dolphins. And they really don't leave, they don't leave, they just go to the coast a little bit, but they are mostly living in the rivers. Very small home range, and strand-feeding is very unique. It's one of the few places in the whole world that it's done, and it's passed from mom to calf. So it's a very unique behavior. You don't get coastal dolphins coming and learning it. You don't learn it as an adult, and so, you know, not disrupting that behavior is very important. Some of the significant findings that we have found during this study is that these are the number of dolphins that we have identified as strand-featers. And this is only at Captain Sam's. They do strand-feed around Charleston, other dolphins. And so we work closely with NOAA and National Marine Mammal Foundation, who's had a photo ID and catalog of dolphins for about twenty-five years. So all of our images go into this national database, so our data is going into this national database. And they're giving us the information as far as who is who, how long they've been around, how old they are, and so that's some of the great information that we can share with the public. You know, here's Step, she's thirty years old, this is her calf. And that just really makes the experience a lot greater for the community. We see about the same five to seven dolphins, which I think is amazing. If you've been down there, you're seeing the same few dolphins, day in and day out, strand-feeding. So for these animals, this is their, their feeding spot, or, you know, fishing hole, if you will. And so I think it's just amazing to come, as a tourist or a local, that these are your local, these are your community dolphins. They literally live in the Kiowa River most of the time. And just what an experience that you guys can, you have this, and, and that we can share that with the community. Thinking about long-term stability, just as a, you know, researcher, we looked at it's only passed down from mom and calf, and based on some genetic testing, and then some probable associations, we can tell it right now, we believe Coco, this mom, is one of our main breeding females. So meaning she's gonna be the, the one right now that's passing strand-feeding down to the next generation. And if you've gone down there recently, actually the last two and a half years, she has a recent calf. She's very obvious and, you know, amazing to, to witness. Just some of our other data, you know, this is an animal that I just saw a couple of weeks ago. And our, you know, based on our monitoring project, we were able to ID, this animal is born in 2002, and, and just seen in 2020, which was awesome. So, you know, we're providing this bigger set of data. It's not just something that we're collecting, and we have volunteers out there. You know, we're helping with identifying home ranges. We've identified some of the first animals they didn't even know came into the Kiowa River, we're identifying strand-featers, and then population status and health, so saying, hey, this animal's still alive. You guys knew it in 2002, this other group, we now saw it in 2020, so, you know, you know it's alive. We also work with animals that strand and, and die. So Coco and Kai, I think this is one of the most amazing things that I've witnessed here, and, and hope to do more research on this pair, but this is the mother-calf pair. She had a calf in 2018, so the calf's two and a half years. They've spent three, you know, three to six years with their mom, learning to hunt, feed, protection, and strand-feed, and this animal is just starting to learn how to strand-feed. We're watching the mother nudge it to shore, feeding it fish. And the, and the calf is watching large groups of dolphins strand-feed, and it's, you know, two or three feet back, and we're really watching this animal. And this is gonna be our next strand feeder, you know, next generation. So when your kids and grandkids want to come back, you know, hopefully in a few, ten, fifteen years, you know, this little guy is probably gonna still be here feeding. That's just an image of it, watching its mother strand-feed. So Step, for example, she's thirty years old, she's probably older than thirty years old, but she's been monitored for twenty, twenty-seven, sorry, since 1995. Based on this research project, this is the first time she'd have been identified in Captain Sam's, and that she was a strand feeder. We're also looking at family dynamics, so this is the same adult, Step is what we call her. And we also identified her two offspring, so one's eleven and one's sixteen. And what's neat is now we've seen them strand-feeding together, so they have long-term family dynamics, and they use the spit to come back and feed together. As you've all known, we've seen strand-feeding from single to up to six animals. There's different feeding strategies. This is all stuff that we're monitoring and would like to do more research on. We've things, the spit is not only for strand-feeding, we've seen them resting there, definitely maternal care, strand-feeding, playing, socializing, and mating. I've seen all in the spit. The mom especially spends a significant amount of time there since she's had her calf, so it's obviously a very safe space for her, and she's also very, you know, protective of her calf. So then when you think about, you know, people there and people wanting to get close to them, because they, you know, you want to get pictures of them, you, you know, she, you definitely don't want to disturb her teaching it, and then also just her caring for her young. These are just three examples, you know, dolphins in, in other years, not, in other areas, not strand-feeding, but showing that the dolphins have altered their behavior and their movements and their feeding patterns based on tourism. These are boat-based tourism, so a little bit different. But I do believe that these animals are, there is a chronic harassment going on down there, which is constant, you know, people, if you think about, we spoke to four thousand people, you know, that, that made the trek down to, to Beach Walker, or sorry, to the spit. And as we know, it's not easy to necessarily get down there. Most people we talked to are there to see the dolphins, asking when the dolphins are there. And so that's four thousand people that have the potential to interact with these animals in the water, getting too close, boats, and that's not counting boats and kayaks. Just did a little, very quick, kind of summary of some of your main programs. And I just want to highlight, you know, the importance of dolphins. And again, I'm not saying one is better than the other, just kind of compared some of their lifespans. These dolphins are type predators, so obviously very important to our ecosystem. They live for forty years in your river, so, you know, if I don't, if you've lived here for a while, you've been seeing the same small group of dolphins. Very accessible, meaning you can go out almost every day and see these dolphins, whether it's at the spit or the ocean. You know, I'm kind of comparing, some people don't even see it, you know, never get to see a turtle. I've never seen one. And so they are considered a strategic stock, meaning they are not threatened necessarily, but because this is a resident population of local dolphins, three, this three hundred and fifty, they're not genetically distinct, but they're considered strategic, meaning if they're, because it's such a small population, any number of deaths to this population could be detrimental. And you won't get just these offshore dolphins coming and kind of filling the space. So say they died from an oil spill or a natural disease, it would take a very, very long time to repopulate this population. We currently don't have studies or papers written, but we are working on a paper that will be published very soon on some of our findings. But I, this is an amazing study site that we'd like to do more, and then, you know, I have studies and funding, question marks, because, my apologies, I don't know of your funding and, and studies on, on all these other programs, but it was just to highlight some of those, your three programs. So Kiowa's investment, you know, you guys have been very, I'm very grateful for the support you've given us over the last three years. But I think Kiowa's, your support, not only your financial support, but I just think showing an investment shows that, you know, you're invested in the dolphins, the long-term protection, protecting strand-feeding, protecting, you know, our program, supporting us. And so just kind of directions that we think we could go. I'd love to see more of a collaborative effort. I think we, you know, having a management plan as far as kind of the long-term is, you know, kind of protecting these animals, continuing, expanding our education program, website information, on the Kiowa website information, increased town communication, better engagement. So I think, again, I think coming from the town down to the community, we meet a lot of people that live here that have never heard of the program, didn't know we exist, didn't know what we do. And, and versus, you know, coming in, and, you know, I, sometimes I think we do get a bad rap, you know, that we're just there, and we're there to yell at people and tell you to stand back and ruining. And that's not our intentions at all. Our volunteers are educated with a lot of really exciting and information, great information. And so I think if it came down, you know, that this is a great experience. I think people can come down. We have, we can give maybe even better talks, better information. We have so much information, we can point out the individual dolphins, just to make that experience so much greater for your visitors, or, you know, people that are coming down to see these animals. Additional trainings, recruitment of volunteers, data. And then we'd ultimately like to help create land-based viewing guidelines with NOAA, which would be a pretty in-depth study, because they do not currently have land-based viewing guidelines. They only have water, on water viewing guidelines. And so because this is kind of a unique area, we think we could help support that. Just want to thank all of our Kiowa volunteers, who spent a lot of very, very hot hours on the beach. And that's it. Thank you.
Lauren, thanks. Thank you for that.
Sure. Sorry that was fast. I just wanted to go through it quickly for you.
Any questions from the council?
I have one question. How many strand-feeding sites are there in the United States?
So in the United States, so they basically, like South Carolina down to the Georgia coast, a little bit North Carolina, and that's really it. So this is very, very unique.
That's why it was very, yes.
Yep, and that's why people come here to do it. There's been two wildlife film crews that have been here, National Geographic and Netflix is currently filming, because it's, it's so rare, it's so amazing, and it's one of the few places that you can witness it. And we, we talked to people on the beach that, you know, their entire vacation was planned around coming to Kiowa to see these dolphins. It's that amazing, and it's just gotta be protected.
I know that David Prumphy told me there was a National Ge- I know that, um, David Prumphy told me there was a National Geographic videographer there this weekend. And he has a video, which I haven't seen yet, I intend to watch it, and he said it's very, very good.
Mm-hmm, yeah. It's, it's amazing.
And you have how many Keowa volunteers?
I'd say about sixteen currently.
All right.
Great.
All right. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
If, if you haven't gotten down there recently, it, it is amazing how many, how much more populated it has become.
Years ago, it wasn't.
Yeah, they're, yeah, they're a large crowd. It's kind of a two-edged sword. I mean, you kind of on the one hand wish that nobody knew about it. All right, um, so let's move ahead to old business. Uh, and for old business, we have the second reading of, uh, two ordinances. Um, the first is to consider the approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash ten, uh, which is an ordinance for the town of Keowa Island, South Carolina, for the purposes of which are to amend parts of fourteen general regulations, chapter one, uh, flood damage protection or prevention. Um, again, essentially we discussed this and approved in our first reading at the last meeting. This, um, the primary change here is to, uh, amend this so that we are incorporating the newly, uh, approved FEMA flood maps in place of the two thousand four, is that one the, the prior, prior maps for two thousand four? Um, there are also a, a definitional, a definitional, um, change here and, and a couple of other minor things. But the primary issue here is, is, um, is, um, is substituting the new maps. Uh, again, this was approved at the last meeting for first reading. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
The one thing, by the way, just to, um, and I think all of you know this. I, I noticed that there's been some community discussion in the past couple of weeks about the FEMA flood maps and changes in ratings and the, and, um, and I know there is some confusion. I don't know whether sometime it would be worthwhile for us to do a, a town notes article or a e-blast or something. But, um, people not necessarily realizing that on the flood insurance piece of this, this relates to the, um, FEMA maps and the FEMA flood insurance, it's not impacting your wind hail, it's not impacting your fire and, um...
I think in town notes, it would be helpful to send something out because there is that confusion.
Okay. Um, the second, um, change is to consider on second reading, uh, approval of ordinance two thousand twenty dash eleven, which is an ordinance to amend, uh, article fifteen, general offenses, chapter two. Um, and this again is a change in our littering ordinance, um, that is making, uh, definitional changes and also enforcement changes directed primarily at putting us in a better position to deal with the issues that we have at Sora Rail. And I think everybody knows that, um, on a frequent occurrence, we have issues with people dumping a, a large amount of materials everywhere around Sora Rail. I do want to do a, a shout out though, both to Brian, if he's here, and to Stephanie, um, that I think one of our concerns in the past was that there were things we could do to make the, the, uh, to make the signage clearer, um, as to what you could and could not leave where the other dumpsters were and that we were serious about enforcement. And we've also added a second camera, so it's harder now to sneak around and not get caught. Um, and part of the intent here was to prove our, improve our ability when we do have infractions of ensuring that the judge is in a position to, to levy appropriate penalties. Um, so, um, did I, did I get a, did I get a motion yet? Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, any other comments, questions?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Again, uh, I can't believe I do this, but probably every weekend I make two trips past Sora Rail. I don't know why.
Wow.
And I can't wait till I never do that again. Never have any inclination to do that.
Do you have a lot of domestic garbage there that needs to be thrown away, huh?
But I do have to tell you that in the last six weeks, I mean, it is really turned, earlier in the summer, it was just, it was embarrassing, um, what people were doing, but it really has started. I think it started to turn around. I don't know, Brian, if that's your sense. Um, all right, we're going to new, turn to new business. Um, and this one, um, is for us initially to consider amending and approving ordinance two thousand twenty, uh, dash oh nine dash, or dot one, an ordinance of the town of Keowa Island, South Carolina regarding face coverings, restrictions on restaurants, establishments that possess a state permit to sell alcohol, other businesses and facilities, and essential businesses. Um, and I think we're going to need probably a good amount of help, I think, with, from Joe and from Stephanie on this because it became a little bit of a moving target. Why don't you, yeah, go on up so you can answer questions or help us as we go through. But let me set the background. Um, as you recall, um, about a month and a quarter ago, we, we passed the, an ordinance which did essentially three things. It incorporated our town ordinance with regard to wearing face coverings. Um, both, you know, for example, when you were waiting to go into a restaurant, when you were waiting outside for takeout and, and so on, which was a local ordinance. It continued our ordinance on, um, occupancy levels at essential businesses, which is essentially the fifty percent at Harris Teeter. Um, and the requirement that Harris Teeter only have one person per family. And then we had adopted all of the orders by the governor in his emergency order as it related to, um, in-store dining or in-restaurant dining. So the fifty percent occupancy, the, the, um, six feet distancing, the hygiene issues, and also his ordinances with respect, or his ordinance, I should say, his, his emergency order regarding large group functions. Is that fair? What we had intended to do and the reason that we initially put this on the agenda for discussion today is that we can only make that initial ordinance for sixty days. And it would have expired between now and our November seventh, November second, uh, town council meeting. So to avoid us calling a special council meeting between now and November, the intent here was for us simply to take the ordinance that we had in place and to re-approve it with a new date, a date that would take us through December fifth, which would get us out to the end of the term of this town council and with enough days to allow the next town council, um, the ability at that point to pick up this subject and put their own stamp on directionally where they want to go. Um, what changed is that last week or the end of the week before, the governor, in the meantime, decided to make a change in the ordinance with respect to, um, in-store dining. Uh, particularly, um, eliminating the fifty percent requirement, maintaining a number of the requirements for the hygiene things, masks and so on. Um, and then turning some things into, we would really like you to do this, like the six-foot distancing and so on. So I think that we're going to need to talk our way through. It's very confusing to me what the governor left in place because it's a huge document. Um, and I think we need to decide what we want to keep in place and what we don't. Um, I will put my own stake in the ground. I think then I'm going to just turn it over to, to Joe and, and let him give his sense of what our options are. Um, but I think we, from my perspective, are in a position where we clearly need to continue to extend our face covering requirement. Um, because the medical advice we get, um, what we see going on with, we're not spiked like we were in August, um, with the concerns about cold weather coming in, Maori indoors, um, other flu issues. There seems to be no reason why we would rescind that face covering ordinance at this point in time. I think the bigger questions are, are there any things which the governor relaxed related to in-store dining that we would want to su-, to reimpose where we have the authority to do that? And, and while I personally think there are some, I, I think I'll, I'll hold that. We need to discuss that, figure out where we're all at. Um, but Joe, why don't you sort of give your sense of what, what, what has happened and what our latitude is?
Yeah, so, I, really, there haven't been, he, he completely issued a whole new order, wiping out everything that came before, which is what he did about a month ago. Um, it remains, I, I, I don't even know, I, I'll approach it in, in terms of the areas where he, the, he has explicitly said the city can take, any municipality can take action. Number one, impose face coverings. Number two, uh, adopt regulations governing restaurants over and above what he's done, if the town wants. And number three, uh, municipalities still have control over beach access and beach parking, uh, something that hadn't been an issue here. Um, so the biggest change is the restaurant regulations by the governor. And this is where he has, as you noted, and it's been in the papers, he did away with his fifty percent occupancy limit. What has not been as widely reported is that he gave municipalities the right to adopt fair and reasonable, uh, limitations of their own over restaurants.
He, he did though, I, I think, he kept in place the restrictions on no alcohol served after eleven. That's still in place.
And masks. Masks are required by patrons and, uh, employees.
No crowds.
But I think they can, you can now congregate at bars as perh-, that's been taken away, hasn't it? The prohibition has been taken away.
That's what I was getting to, the list, there, there's a list of twenty-one, I believe, uh, restrictions on bars from the prior order. The overwhelming majority of that list has gone from being mandatory to recommended. It's such as being, uh, people congregating at the bar, uh, six feet, tables being six feet apart are some of the big ones that jump out. Um, and we're part of the Keowa emergency ordinance that, that's currently in place. So I, I, I didn't really even get into this. I mean, I, I've prepared a, a proposal that obviously can be adjusted in many different ways. The important things from my point of view for the amended emergency ordinance is that we refer to the new executive order instead of the old one and that we deal with the date. Uh, and other than that, it's up to you guys. Uh, you can strike the mask ordinance or adjust it. Um, with regards to the restaurants, as, as pointed out, we still have the eleven o'clock cutoff for alcohol. And we still have required mask wearing by customers and employees. Beyond those two things, you have a whole long laundry list of recommendations from the governor. Uh, so the town can either step away and just allow the state law to, the state recommendations to control. Uh, you can just incorporate those state recommendations, the ones you want to emphasize. Or you can make those rec-, recommendations mandatory. Um, and it's really, I mean, that's about it.
So maybe a way to structure wa-, walking through this conversation is to walk through the different pieces that we have. And I think, well, let's just get a sense of where, where the council members are, where each of you are with respect to that issue, um, on a broad level. And, and for example, let's, I mean, let's start with the face covering ordinance. So, um, our intent had simply been, walking into this meeting, to leave that ordinance written as it is. And the only thing that we were going to do was extend it to December fifth, Stephanie? Um, with the ability then for a future council to decide at that point, uh, whether to extend it beyond that in the same form or otherwise. And also recognizing that, you know, if there were, I mean, if there was something that happened between now and then, a vaccine, or, I mean, there's nothing that prevents us or the next council from immediately stepping in and changing that. So maybe let's start with that one first. Um, what is the sense of the council members with regard to that intended direction? Um, is, is that something that we generally still see a desire to maintain in place?
Yes.
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 Absolutely.
I, I think absolutely.
Okay. Um, the second piece that was in there, that has been there for some time, is the constraint, the, the, um, occupancy constraint on essential businesses. Now, we had approached it that way. Remember, that was a change from, at one time, we had an occupancy requirement on all businesses. We went to essential so that we could essentially deal with the issue of pharmacies and grocery stores where we were concerned about the safety of those establishments because they were, they had their own special sort of physical, fiscal issues. They were highly populated by tourists and they were not discretionary. You know, the average resident can't just say, I'm not going to a grocery store. It's, they've, they've got to go. And so we were trying to keep that in line. And, and I would argue, I think someone could argue both ways on this. Um, I think it's paid great dividends during the summer, having that, that occupancy requirement in place. Um, admittedly, anybody goes to Harris Teeter now, you know, the, the crowds are going down. So I don't know how often the occupancy is actually getting triggered now. Um, but the, as, as proposed here, it keeps that restriction in place. Um, so I asked the same question. Well, how does the council feel about the continuation of that?
I think, um, as you said, I mean, I've been there quite a bit over the past month. I have not seen a, a line even of one person once, so it has not been in effect. Um, if we, um, extrapolate that, that's likely to remain the case. And then I personally would say, um, I don't think we need to send a message that we are relaxing all sorts of stuff. Since it's not coming into play, I would leave it in place.
I mean, no harm.
Yeah, no harm and we're not sending a message that I think could be, I think a message to start relaxing all sorts of things, I think could be misunderstood and could be harmful, so I don't think we should do it.
Other thoughts?
I concur completely. Leave it in place.
The other element related to that piece was the restriction that we had, which was very specifically around that establishment, that restricted, um, um, customers to one person per family. Um, and that one is, is a little different. One, I think we recognize it's the, the enforcement of that has kind of fallen by the wayside, um, by the store. Um, and so we, I, but I think we have the same question there. You could either go on the same argument, well, do we want to restrict that? Do we want to give the wrong signal by taking it away? I think you could also make the argument on that one, that it's such a, right now, because the occupancy is down, it really isn't serving a very strong purpose. Um, that if there was something you were going to relax, that might be one of the least troublesome ones to do that. Um, I'm not arguing either way, but...
I, the real, I wouldn't recommend that and I'll tell you why. Um, we've got a couple of very big holidays for Keowa coming up. The Thanksgiving holiday is going to be big, a lot of people come down. Christmas holidays are going to be big. And that's when families are going to arrive in group. And I don't see any reason why more than one person has to go into the store. The crowds then are going to be greater. You are going to have a number of families. We're kind of used to the fact that people know only one person's going to go in. I'd leave it in place, my thought.
I agree.
Yeah, I, I would, I would change it. I would leave it up to the discretion of the store. If they're crowded, try to get into a one person per family thing. But if they're empty, I don't see the point of doing it.
I have to say, probably contradicting what I just said, but in this particular case, I'm with Chris. For me, the issue is also, you know, we should all be avoiding as much as we can rules that are not being enforced, and this one's not being enforced. And we can't really put the onus on the poor store manager or the minimum wage employees to enforce that. I go there a fair bit, and it's not one person per family. It's just not happening. So, you know, I would agree, leave it to Harris Teeter, which, to be fair, probably means it's gone. I also don't think we have to make a big announcement. We just don't roll it over in the ordinance, no one's going to notice.
Different thoughts?
Out of a general statement, I'd like to make, you know, in anticipation of this discussion we're having, I think it's easy to forget that COVID is still there. And I got some numbers together, and statewide in South Carolina, we've had 146,576 cases. In Charleston County, 15,721. But what really got my attention was that in the state, on an average, we're testing 4,947 people in a day. But now, the numbers are up to 14% are returning as positive COVID patients. In addition to that, I just read today that the number of hospitalizations is increasing slightly every day. So, I think, and not in this particular with one per family, I don't think that's the big thing. But I think when we're going through these other issues, we should remember, it's not over. It's not over.
I agree. All right. Well, since at the moment, we're split on that one, and I can break that, but I'm going to hold off to it because I like to think of this as a package in terms of where we want to get on all of the different issues. So, we'll set that one aside a second as we have a split view. So, then it takes us to, I think, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, really to now the governors, the issues that the governor has dealt with respect to indoor dining. The major, I think the most major thing he has done there is the elimination of the 50%. Not only in terms of its impact, but also the message that it has given. I will say that I am concerned, well, first of all, just externally, I think you've all seen the same, that the medical authorities have pretty clearly come out believing that the governor made a mistake with that decision. I don't know if you saw yesterday, the college presidents all came out and basically kind of asked the municipalities to fill in, even though we don't have a university here, to do something because they were concerned that that was not a good decision. My concern is that, to Mary Ann's point, I mean, this is not over. If anything, there are concerns about going into the fall, what we're going to experience as people are indoors more rather than out, if you're not able to do outdoor dining. I understand the reasons why they need to, why they want to do this. But you really have to wonder whether it's the wrong move at this point in time. One of the things which I've considered is, there really are two pieces to his ordinance. One was the occupancy, the other was keeping the tables spaced. And what it does seem to me is that, that we could pretty well deal with the safety issue probably by dealing and maintaining the six foot. By not focusing on the occupancy, but focusing on the table spacing. That, that what we do is require restaurants to continue, to be required to follow the earlier restriction on spacing, on socially distancing tables, six feet apart or whatever. And as a result of that, it is probable that on Kiowa, most, if not all restaurants, would definitely not end up being able to get to the 100%.
Right.
And some are even going to probably be back closer to the 50. But it doesn't put us in a position of now trying to come up and invent our own number of those 50, right? Or 60 or 70. But yet, we're still requiring the spacing. Now, I don't know from, Joe and I have not talked about that. I don't know legally how he feels about that. And obviously, I don't know how any of you feel about that approach. I do have a sense that in the short term, most of, I'm pretty comfortable that the non-fresh field dining establishments are not intending to go to 100% anytime soon. I don't have that same knowledge about fresh fields establishments.
Can I, and the six foot issue, which the mayor is talking about, and that deserves a mayor. Does the governor, in his earlier work, and I should know this, but I don't, is it six feet, six feet between tables or six feet between a group dining and the next group dining?
Between patrons.
Between tables.
Let's take a look. I think it's diners.
Because there's a big difference.
Restaurants, now, it says should, it used to say must. Restaurants should space indoor and outdoor tables at least six feet apart.
I thought it said tables. I thought it focused on tables, though.
Then you're going to have people well within that six feet.
To ensure that, to ensure that customers are at least six feet apart from any other party or group.
I think if we were going to consider the six foot issue, I would want it very clear that it's six feet between any customer at a different table.
I agree.
In other words, you can put six feet between two tables and the two people sitting there are two feet apart.
Yep.
That's not acceptable. And I have seen that. And I think we're not very clear, the poor restaurant owner is not going to know what to do.
But, you know, I guess I would go back to what I said a little while ago, which is, why would we even do that? Right? I think we should think through, so, is there, you know, if we did that, we are sending a signal that we're relaxing some things, which I, on balance, don't like. So, are we doing something great for the restaurants? I kind of doubt it because I don't think there is a lot of room for them. I agree with you, there's not a lot of room for them to put in additional tables if we stick with the six feet carefully defined, but take away the 100%. So, then what we've done is, we haven't given them any relief. But we've sort of put the notion out there that we're relaxing some, some things. I'm not sure why we're doing that.
So, you'd leave it at 50?
I would just leave it exactly as it is. And just as an aside, while we get there, hanging at a bar is a really, really bad idea. I love hanging at bars, I really do. And this is a bad time to be doing it. That should be absolutely not allowed at, we don't have that many bars, but we have a few. Right?
I think a number that we don't have, I don't have, is what percent of restaurants have been having 100% occupancy of their allowance? And I've heard that hasn't been happening, it's more like 50%. If they're allowed 25%, they have them getting up to 25.
Yeah, but let the weather get cooler. Right now, it's no problem because everyone's outside.
I think it's the cooler way.
I guess my, my only comeback to that, and I agree by everything you say, is that I think we can correctly argue that in this case, we're not, the governor relaxed.
Right.
The governor eliminated, we're starting from nothing now. We're not, we're not saying, oh, the governor has this in place, let's reduce what he's currently doing. The governor's taken it all off. So, I think if anything, we are in the process right now of saying, whoa, we don't agree with what the governor did in all places. We, in fact, are giving the contrary message to say, well, no, we, we think that's too much, too fast, and we are putting some things back. So, I'm not as concerned about the message because I think we are, we are acting affirmatively to do that. Which would be different, you'd be absolutely correct, if what we were saying was, okay, we have the latitude to just eliminate the governor's stuff. Because my only concern is, we're trying to do this, you know, for a couple of months out. And I think our goal is to ensure the safety of the diners and the public. All of the guidance today still says it's the six foot, you know, that the key thing is the six foot requirement. And if you can keep the focus on that six feet, then, you know, if that means that for some restaurants, they're still at 50%, they can't move beyond the 50%, but another one can get, another one can get to 75%. I'm inclined to think, you know, we also don't want them to go out of business. If they can go to 75%, but still fundamentally keep them as safe as the person that's at the 50%, is there an advantage for us giving them that ability to do that? Because there are, I mean, you know, like, we all know our different restaurants, they're somewhere, yeah, six feet apart. Wattel is probably not going to be able to add one more piece.
I do think, too, there's a positive side to this kind of restriction. I think many of our residents and many of our guests are not going to go to a restaurant that is unrestricted. They won't go. If it's six feet between
Patrons.
Patrons dining as a group, that'll work for people. They will want to go there. If it's unrestricted, they aren't going to go there.
And it gives at least the restaurant owner some flexibility.
Yeah.
You have to let these guys run the business.
And it's still personal responsibility for where you decide to go to eat. If it's not appropriate or if it is appropriate.
And I, and I, you know, in informal conversations, some of the restaurants, I mean, my sense is that there is a mix here. There are some who absolutely, if they could go to 100%, they're going. And I understand that, and sometimes it relates to the type of business and the age of their clientele and everything else. But there are others that probably are not believing the governor did them any favors here. Because the concern is that they were getting people willing to come in at low occupancy. And people are going to go, well, I was willing to go at, you know, distance tables, but I'm not going to go to that, I'm not going to make a reservation at some restaurants on King Street and walk in and have it back to the gills.
I agree with what Klaus said about the bar there, too. I think that's an important, I didn't know that that restriction was lifted.
It was made voluntary.
Right.
Yes. I mean, I, I think what the governor has done is, he's put the ball in our court. To be clear.
That's correct.
And I would, and I, well, let's move to the bar. But first, where do we stand on the occupancy and that issue? Is there a, is there a?
I would, I would stick with the six foot between patrons, defined as, you know, what Dan's talking about. And I would leave that as the, as the defining issue, and I'd leave the percentage off.
That's not how it's defined right now, is it? It's not between patrons, it's between tables, isn't it?
No.
Is it? It's a question.
We can make it between.
No, I know that, I'm just wondering whether we confuse everyone by putting a new thing now.
I kept the same language, I just made it, in my proposal, I made it voluntary, we could easily make it mandatory. But this language was from our existing ordinance, and it says, restaurants, tables must be spaced to keep diners at least six feet apart.
Oh, okay. All right.
It's simple and concise. We have some issues with the mechanics of how we're going to do this. I've proposed one way where our section seven in the proposal, I've separated out, there's the governor's mandatory rules, and then there's a separate section for the town's rules that could be mandatory or voluntary.
So, let's finish these two, and then we can figure out how we construct the ordinance. So, so I'm still not sure yet whether we're at a consensus on the.
No, I can go with that. Six feet, patrons spaced apart, six feet.
Change the language, I would recommend you change the language. If you start with tables, that's what people read. If you start with, there must be six feet between a group of diners at one table and a group of diners at the next table, or something like that, start with diners and then go to tables. Don't start with tables, because that, I think somebody's going to read tables and say, well, there's six feet between your table and mine.
I agree with you.
So, restaurants must keep diners at least six feet apart, except diners at.
Well, diners sitting at one table must be, the diners must be kept six feet from diners at another table. There's a way to do it.
Yeah.
You're brilliant with the language.
Which takes us to the bar congregating issue. And Klaus, I, I mean, I absolutely agree on that one. And also, on Kiowa, it's probably true in every restaurant in town, too. But I think it's particularly important here because if you look at our smaller, most of our small restaurants, the way the bars are set up compared to the dining, any of the bar congregation is essentially at the expense of congregating around the diners. I mean, they aren't separate, you know, we don't have to stand alone in the bar. Whether you're at Cantina's 70, whatever.
76.
76.
Or at the Rite of Cup, you know.
Or anywhere, yeah, I mean, the bar is right there.
The bar and the diner are.
Right. And so, that would involve taking the verbiage that the governor made as a, as a wish and turning that into a requirement. Because he has language still saying that.
Which restriction, I'm sorry?
This is the congregating.
Yes, okay, right. Yes, he still has that as a should. He switched it to a should.
We want it to be a must.
Right, fair enough, it's, yeah. I guess, well.
So, let me just sum up for the moment where we're at, which is, we would keep our face covering ordinance in place as currently written. We would keep our occupancy in essential businesses at 50% as currently written. We haven't taken a tiebreaker vote yet on the issue of multiple people in the store. With respect to in-store dining, we would, we would reimpose a more clearly worded six-foot distancing between diners requirement to replace the easing that the governor put in place. And we would resubstitute or reestablish the no congregating at bars. Now, Joe, A, did I get that correct? Did I summarize that correctly? And then, B, by, the other things which were of concern to us were some of the hygiene things, but those all in restaurants, but those all stayed in place, right?
He did leave a, and, yes, they stayed in place as a mandatory, and it's his first restriction. I'll just read it because it's pretty lengthy and maybe it'll help for everyone to grasp. Restaurants that elect to provide indoor/outdoor customer dining services for on-premises or dine-in consumption, as authorized herein, shall take reasonable, shall take reasonable steps to incorporate, implement, comply with, and adhere to any applicable sanitation guidelines promulgated by the CDC, DHEC, or any other state or federal public health officials, as well as relevant industry guidelines to limit exposure to COVID-19. So, that, that is still a mandatory restriction and at the top of the governor's list.
So, are there any other things? And then, and then the group functions have all stayed pretty much the same.
Yes.
The language on larger groups. Because I do expect that as the year progresses, we are going to have some of those issues start to hit. But I think, so, is there anything with regard to the dining
Well, there.
we haven't talked about that the council might want to consider?
There were two items that are in our existing ordinance we haven't talked about that were borrowed again from what the governor had and are now voluntary. Number one, restaurants should seat no more than eight customers per table, unless from the same family. Well, and we've talked about the 50% occupancy. So, those were the only.
So, we jettison the 50% occupancy, we strengthen the six-foot requirement, I think. And we haven't addressed the.
The eight customers per table, I don't know.
I don't know, if it's, if the exception is unless they're from the same family. I don't, if it's, if the exception is unless they're from the same family, I think that's fine. I'd leave it, I mean.
I agree.
I, I, I don't think it's a big issue. Remember, you can get a private.
Jettison or?
Right.
Keep it.
Leave it in place.
Leave it in place. Okay.
I don't feel too strongly about that. It doesn't happen too often.
And, and just for clarity, I mean, we're talking about making these three particular items mandatory.
Correct.
Not recommendations, but mandatory.
So, the only one left is this question of whether at essential businesses, we still restrict to one person per family. Um, and, um, my, uh, just, Klaus, I totally understand the, the concern about backing off or looking like we're easing things up, but from my perspective, if we do these other things, I think as a package, we've still made it clear that we are not walking away from our seriousness about COVID. Uh, we're still keeping the dining, the, the, so. And, and my sense is that right now with the loads of people at Freshfields, um, that we aren't, we aren't doing anything anymore on that. And, uh, and probably in some cases, maybe even mildly shooting ourselves in the foot because they see the sign and they see that everybody's paying any attention to it, and kind of all, but if they're not paying attention to this, how are they going to pay attention to something else? So, I would be okay, um, with letting that one go by the wayside.
You know, I said yes.
You said yes to that as well.
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay, I thought we were still.
No, you know, it was two, 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 two.
Okay.
It's us.
Two Desmonds.
So, Joe, what do we have to do to incorporate what we've talked about conceptually into cleaning up the, do we, we don't have the ability to prove this in concept. I assume we have to prove this ordinance with the actual language, right?
Yes, um, I think what you'll find is the, the ordinance that I circulated can capture that consensus with just
Couple of minor.
A couple of minor changes.
So, what if we did, so what if we did this? Could we now table this for about thirty minutes? While you go back, you and Stephanie go back, look at the ordinance, make sure that it correctly captures any of what we've discussed. We can do, move to the other items on this agenda and then come back and repick this up and, and make sure that the language we're voting on is correct, or do you think we've got it?
I could read it.
You think we're good?
I think we're good. I mean, because again, I, I just, I changed it voluntary to mandatory. I take out the fifty percent occupancy and, and, you know, other, and I'll incorporate Dan's language on the six feet apart.
Okay.
And I think I can read that
Go for it.
into the record.
And then on page five, there will be the single person per family approved.
Correct. That's section ten, correct?
Chapter ten, the last.
All right. Read it.
Okay. So, uh, well, can we make a motion?
Do I need them up? Okay.
Needs to make a motion to amend our existing emergency ordinance, and, and I will read it.
All right. Do I have a motion to amend our existing emergency ordinance, which is twenty dash? Is the, is the current one oh-nine, or is it oh?
Oh-nine.
Is it oh-nine? Oh-nine, no dat- one, no da- no dot one, right? Or is it dot one?
The new one will be dot one.
Right, so, so, so to amend the current ordinance, two thousand twenty dash oh-nine. Do I?
So moved.
Second. Okay.
And so what we're going to do is we're going to adopt the language in the, uh, the, the amendment that I circulated with the following changes. Um, section seven, the second half of section seven, we'll read. In addition, pursuant to the authority granted by the governor's executive order, number twenty twenty dash sixty-three, section three F, uh, the town also requires that restaurants comply with the following mandatory restrictions. A, diners must be kept six feet apart from diners at other tables. Uh, B.
She said, because wha- while, while at the table. I mean, this, this isn't impacting the movement of people in and out and whatever.
While seated?
While seated.
While seated, yeah.
Uh, B, restaurants must seat no more than eight customers per table unless from the same family. And number C, restaurants shall not allow standing or congregating in bar, in the bar area of restaurants. The other change from what was circulated will be taking out section ten. And of course, doing the renumbering that reflects that. And, and to be clear, section ten is the section that, uh, limits single persons per family, uh, and going into essential businesses.
And those are the only required changes?
Correct, and, and again, just so we're clear, this will go till December fifth, which is sixty days from now.
So, do we need a motion now to add those to amend?
I think you've, no, we just, no, I think you've just made that. That's part of the amendment that's on the table.
All right.
I have, I have one question, Mr. Mayor. The new council is sworn in on, or about the third?
Yes, it's been certified, so it's.
So, they'll have to have a very quick special call meeting, is that correct? Okay, that's just what I'm trying to make sure I knew.
Yeah, normally if the election's on the first, and so, normally by Thursday, they.
That would might be the third.
Oh, okay, I didn't know it was normal to have an immediate meeting of the new council.
It's not.
They don't have.
But you can, but you have enough ti- you have enough time.
Cause they got enough time.
Good, thank you.
So, we'll.
Get to jump right into it.
Okay. Um, okay, so, um, at this point, we can go ahead and vote on this amended ordinance.
I believe so, yes.
So, I have a motion, and I have a second.
Yes.
Um, any additional discussion?
No.
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, very good. Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All right, let's move to, uh, item C, and, um, uh, either Stephanie Braswell and/or Jim, or some com- combination is going to, uh, handle this. We have two things which really go together. Uh, one is to consider approval of resolution twenty dash oh-four, a resolution to protect and preserve Kiowa's environment and wildlife. And along with it as a companion, to consider approval of the Save Kiowa Bobcats Week proclamation. Um, so let's take B first. Stephanie, it appears you're going to handle this.
Actually, um, I'm just going to allow you to view a new public awareness video that.
Oh, we're going to see the, the film.
Yeah, because it's relative to your next agenda, item B. Um, and so this is brand new. No one has seen it other than a few select people, and it was a project between the communications department and Jim and wildlife.
Although I guess we have to do like they do in the news these days, where I have to inform you that there is a scene that may be difficult for sensitive viewers, right?
Viewer discretion advised, yes. Okay. Oh.
The volume's off.
Do you have the volume, Patri? It's on on mine.
Says on.
Mine says, uh, mine says off.
Maybe it's too low.
There's nowhere to turn it on.
Actually, there wasn't some, there wasn't volume at the very beginning at all, I think. It might be just the words.
Yeah, you can't hear the music, though.
Yes, I said, maybe it's just about the level.
It's not coming out of the computer, unfortunately. Patri, do you know if there might be an audio, if I need to hook something to audio over here? No. Huh? No, yeah, there's. Mm-hmm. It should be in the. Hmm? See, it says that. Maybe we won't view it. In the speakers, is the audio all the way up? Okay. All right.
Is there a place on the computer for sound levels?
No, checking through.
It's coming through this. You just can't hear the music.
Well, they can see the video. They'll, they'll get the idea, they'll just miss Jim's interview.
Yeah.
So, I'm Jim Jordan. I'm the wildlife biologist for the town of Kiowa Island. You know, the way that bobcats accumulate these rat poisons is by doing what they normally do, eating rats and mice. The problem is that obviously, these rat poisons in the environment, the rat goes into a bait box and eats it. Typically, it'll cause, cause them to die within three to seven days. During that time, they're a lot easier for a bobcat to catch, right? So, they get a little bit sick, they're a little bit slower. And so if you're a bobcat walking around and all of a sudden there's a slow rat that's easy to catch, you're going to eat it. And then if you come back to the same spot and see another one, you're going to eat that one, too. And so over time, you know, while, you know, eating a handful of rats that, that might have died from, or be dying from this rat poison isn't going to hurt a bobcat, if they do it over time, it builds up in their liver, takes an incredibly long time to break down, and ultimately can cause them to die. They sit at the top of the food chain, one of our largest predators out here. And because of that, they help to control populations of deer and rodents and, and other prey species on the island. As a biologist, we've tracked deer numbers since I started in mid-nineties. And while other communities along the South Carolina coast have gotten rid of most of their predators and their deer numbers have gone up, Kiowas have, have been very stable over the last ten to fifteen years. And that's directly tied to bobcats eating deer fawns and controlling deer numbers. And so one of the first signs that we saw, bobcat numbers were, were suffering or going down, was that we started to see more fawns surviving on the island, and we started to see our deer numbers increase. And in the last two years, our deer population has doubled here at Kiowa. You know, our message for, for many years has been, bobcats need, need good cover, and they need, they need food, they need a place to hunt. So, we've always encouraged, you know, property owners to plant more native plants. Dense understory is really important, buffers between homes, because, you know, bobcats will take advantage of that. In light of what we've determined, you know, here in the last year with the threat from these anticoagulants, that we need to get those out of our environment as quickly as possible. And so we're working to, to do that in a number of ways. Our biggest focus right now is a voluntary program. We call our Bobcat Guardian Program. And effectively, we're asking homeowners, pest control companies, rental agencies to voluntarily stop using anticoagulant rodenticides. There are other alternatives out there. It's easy to make the switch. We're asking folks to only use a rodenticide of any sort, or a pesticide of any sort, when it's absolutely necessary.
Yeah, very nice.
Very nice. And Stephanie, how is this going to be distributed and used?
It is going to be distributed this week on social media, but then it'll go out in next week's e-blast as well, when we push Save the Bobcats Week.
All right, um, so obviously that video kind of, kind of told the story, and everyone's aware, you know, the, the issue with with the anticoagulants in our bobcats. And so the two things on the agenda day, today are basically just intended, you know, for the, for council and the town to formally take a position. And, and while we, you know, I think we all agree there's a problem, and we agree what a good strategy is. Um, you know, the idea is just, just that today we formalize that. Um, it'll give us obviously another opportunity for the communications folks to push more information out there to the public. Um, because, you know, while we had a pretty good initial response to the Guardian Program, it's really died off. In the last couple of weeks, we're not getting sign-ups from pest control companies, and we've pretty, pretty much plateaued. Um, so the hope is that, right, you've got new information, you've got a new stance from the town, you've got this new video. Just another opportunity to kind of, to, to elevate the messaging again so that we can get more people on board.
Jim, how many pesticide companies do we have, and how many signed the pledge versus how many who didn't?
Um, so we have about seventy-three that have business licenses on the island. Um, we are still trying to work with, uh, the DPR, um, and some other groups to make sure that, you know, that there may be companies on that list that are either no longer doing business on the island or only do mosquito control on the island. But we'll, so we'll just say ballpark, we have sixty companies that do pest control. And we've got twenty-three, twenty-three signed up. Um, so we're about thirty, thirty-three percent.
Are we permitted in any of the town communications to identify the ti- the companies that have signed up versus the companies that have not?
So, so we, we are publicizing the companies that have signed up. Um, they're on the town website on the Save Kiowa Bobcats page. Um, so you can view all twenty-three companies, their, their names are on there. Um, we also have, uh, little paw print icons that basically identify companies that, you know, either one, don't use rodenticides of any sort, which we've got a handful of companies that never use a rodenticide. Uh, we've got another icon for integrated pest management, so they follow that protocol. Um, and then the third little icon, um, what is the third one? Third one is for, oh, for companies that offer rodent proofing. So, they'll basically come and seal up your home with, you know, hardware cloth and that sort of thing. Um, so we do not have a list of companies that have not signed up. Um, but the conservancy.
Are allowed to publish, uh, a list of companies that decline to, uh, participate?
Hasn't signed up, but we just haven't published that list.
I thi- I mean, I think we kind of were, were told, or it was strongly suggested, that it's, it's fine to publicize companies that have, but probably not okay to publicize companies that have not. Um, but the conservancy is kind of working independently on this issue, and will be publicizing both lists.
And one of the things, one of the things that we've been trying to do is to get the Pest Control Association to, um, help us with their records to really understand of the seventy that we have, you know, who's really operating on the island, who's really operating, doing, you know, SPAs or, 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 um, uh, rodenticides. We, we've had, it's fair to say, um, different levels of support and responsiveness on that issue. The words have been good in all cases. The actions haven't yet fully supported the words. But I think it's important here, and I think one of the ports of this resolution is simply that this is not gonna be a quick, this is gonna be a long slog. We're just not gonna solve this problem quickly. And at the end of the day, while the actions in support of our residents is really important for a long-term solution, residents come and go, you're always gonna be struggling with communicating, educating. The real key here is to get our arms around full support from the insecticide, from the pest control industry, because they're the ones who ultimately can make this happen. And that's gonna take a while. But I think things like this resolution or having a proclamation for, you know, what they, by themselves, they don't, they aren't huge, but as part of the bigger program, they help us keep this issue alive and in front of people. Cause I think in the case of a lot of residents, it's, you know, their initial reaction was, yeah, this is important, boy, you know, we gotta do something. But then they move on to other things and we just have to keep this ahead of it.
I'm with you. I do think, speaking as a resident, I've talked to my pest control people about it and he's gone back to his headquarters to find out if they're signing up. And what we've gotta do as residents is if they're not willing to sign up, I gotta look for another pest control person. And that, all of a sudden, it'll make a difference to them. And if we all as residents do that, it will make a big difference. But Craig's right, we gotta do, we gotta move all the things together.
But that's why publishing the names of those companies that won't participate or won't cooperate is informing the residents that go to the other companies, because they're working with us.
Since the conservancy is gonna do that, it may be better for them to do it than for the town. Cause there's some liability.
So, I mean, I buy what Craig says that this will be the way we're doing it here, which is basically, you know, moral suasion and voluntary participation. This is a long slog. I'm still, I mean, are we done and have given up and there's nothing else we can do to get this stopped? Because of course, this would be much easier if the people in Clemson would say, at least we get the one-year stay. You know, I read that letter where they said politely said, "Thanks, but no thanks." And I still struggle with the letter, cause I think what I read is you don't really need it, because I'm sure voluntary stuff will work. And that didn't seem like a really good reason to say no.
So the door is not closed to a regulatory action. And I think, and I know Jim would like to move faster than I would on this, but I think what we're trying to do at the moment is a couple of different things in parallel. So let's try to voluntarily move this to get, you know, forward. Let's make the progress that we can. But at the same time, let's build a record and put us in a position where if we ultimately conclude that voluntary actions are not going to work, we've created enough evidence for the regulatory world to say, "Look, we gave it a fair chance." What we don't need is the regulatory association, or I should say the Pest Control Association saying, "Well, we offered to do this, we offered to do that, we wanted to cooperate," and they just jumped the gun. So I think what we're trying to do is to work with them at the moment, but recognize that pretty soon, we're gonna have to evaluate whether we are making progress or not. And to do that, you know, Jim, as you saw, I mean, we're still testing animals. We've tested several non-bobcats. We're getting them to start on a research project with Clemson that will actually start tracking other rodents and others so we can see whether the pesticides are here, which puts us in a position to eventually go to the regulatory entities and say, "Look, everybody says they're not using it, but the chemicals are still here." And then we are getting significant political support. So driving in here this morning, I talked to Senator Chip Campson, has been a major supporter of this. And he is chair of the Senate Fish Game and Forestry Committee, so he has direct involvement and support. He just sent me a letter that he would like to put in the public record, which I'll just give, cause it's too long to read, but I'll give it to Petra. But essentially outlines what he's done. He has written Clemson in order to indicate his support for solving this issue. He set up a focus call, Zoom call between me and him, the Pest Control Association in Clemson about three weeks ago. And he's now written another letter to Clemson. Basically, I don't wanna say threatening, it's making it clear that if he doesn't see action taking place, that will resolve this problem, that he stands ready to step in and push a regulatory answer. Similarly, Representative Mace, I haven't talked to her, I've traded phone calls. She has indicated that she has communicated a similar message to the governor's office. Because of the committee she sits, she doesn't have the same clout on this issue necessarily that Chip Campson has. But she's indicated support. And also this morning, I talked to, and you have this letter from the Coastal Conservation League. They also are following this closely and have indicated that they are ready to support the town should we choose to push a regulatory approach. And so in the short term, I think the benefit of that is it has gotten the attention of both Clemson and the Pest Control Association. I mean, clearly when they got off the conference call with Chip Campson, their attitude was different. Now, I think we would also agree, it may have been short-lived. And so that's a really long answer to your question, but the answer is I do not believe that the regulatory approach is closed. And I think it will probably have to be in the next four to six weeks that we conclude that that's the avenue we need to go. And if we do, I think we have strong allies in the state legislature that will help move this forward. Jim, would you agree, or Stephanie, would you agree based on your discussions with that?
Yeah, so, yes, that's correct. So obviously DPR is feeling a lot of pressure on this. And so they've made basically three broad promises that they've said they will deliver. They initially said they would do it last month, but now, but the latest is by October thirty-first. So three main things that they're supposed to do. One was we asked that they pull records from all pesticide companies that work on Kewa to look at past and present use of anticoagulants. They are not, they are going to do that, but they are going to do it anonymously through an online survey. So while we had hoped that they would literally come in and say, "Give me your book, let me see what you did last year." They're going to do an online anonymous survey of all pest control companies to gather that data, which they will share with us. They had a long reasoning why they had to do it that way, but that is what they've decided. They are going to do inspections, also prior to October thirty-first, or so they, that's what they've said they would do. In-person inspections with all companies. They're not gonna look at their records at that point. It will be a normal inspection that they do, a routine inspection. But after the routine inspection, they will have a conversation, basically bringing up this issue and encouraging them to not only fill out the anonymous survey, but also to participate in the Guardian Program. Okay, the third thing is to develop a research project to basically say, are these things in the environment still? And if they are, have the levels been reduced substantially? Right? Which is a tough thing to figure out. Obviously, the easiest way to figure out is if you looked at records, right? If you had records from last year and two years ago and three years ago versus this year, you could easily say, "Hey, we're using eighty percent less of this," right? But we're not really gonna get that, unfortunately. So the idea of a research project has been talked about for a while. And DPR is kind of basically taking it on themselves to work with DNR on a very short-term research project. And that's gonna happen sometime again before October thirty-first, probably in the next two weeks. And it's gonna involve staff from the Department of Natural Resources, their biologists coming to Kewa for four or five days. They're gonna catch rats, mice, squirrels, raccoons, opossums. And they're all gonna go to a lab, they're gonna get tested, and then we'll look at the results. Now, obviously, the problem with that is we don't have any pre results, right? Pre all of these voluntary reductions. But obviously, you know, and the mayor alluded to it earlier, you know, we've, since February, have picked up five dead or dying raccoons and one dead or dying opossum. We had those tested ourselves at Michigan State. I think it was out in the e-blast last week, you know, all of those had anticoagulants in their liver. And last week, we picked up two additional dead dying raccoons that we'll send off this week. So my guess is we're, this DNR project is gonna find it, it is still out there in our environment, there's no doubt.
Just, this is a question, not a point I'm making. What do we think is really behind the refusal of the relevant, you know, Clemson University, whatever legal authority, to reject our request for at least a one-year stay? It doesn't strike me that they deny that these things are, that these things are bad. So why, you know, what's the reason to say, "No, you can't have a one-year ban on this stuff?" Cause it obviously is bad. Why not?
They don't wanna set the precedent-
Precedence.
Of what?
Of banning or regulating these chemicals in the state of South Carolina. I think this is a strong pesticide organization. And my sense is it's not unique to South Carolina, that the pesticide industry has a strong-
So they were lobbied, is what you're saying?
I think they have a strong base, yeah.
Yes.
We have a lot left to go, so if you could quickly explain the resolution, let's go ahead and handle-
Yeah, so, so-
Support and go forward.
The wording in the resolution and the proclamation are virtually the same. You know, it's stating things that we've all, we've all said before, and I'm sure you've read it, right? Anticoagulants are a problem, our bobcat numbers are going down, and we want folks to sign up for the Guardian Program. And I'm happy to read through them, but I mean, they're pretty straightforward. And again, the language between the two is almost identical.
So let me ask for a motion to approve Resolution two thousand twenty dash oh four.
I assume.
Do I have a second? And then I would ask if we have any, at that point, any conversation, discussion? I have one question, and I'm not nitpicking, but I see in the resolution, it's both first and second generation. When we spoke the first time about this, I think here in council or maybe on Zoom, it was, I thought I took away the first generation was not nearly as toxic. Am I misunderstanding or misremembering, or has something changed?
Something's changed. So initially, anyway, additional research and conversations with folks who have researched this a lot longer than I have has revealed that first-generation ones can have significant impacts. Especially one in particular, difosinone, which we found in all of our bobcats. So our messaging changed maybe two months ago. To, you know, it used to just be second generation, now it's, we're recommending that folks don't use any anticoagulant, so first or second.
And so a homeowner who has this issue, who has rodents in their basement or first level, they're left with primarily trapping these animals, is that correct?
No, they've still got several, you know, rodenticides that they can use.
Oh, they do.
The two that we recommend are, they're not anticoagulants. One is bromethylene, which is a, basically a neurotoxin. It works almost, it kills just as quickly in one feeding as an anticoagulant, just works differently.
And if a bobcat eats a fair amount of those, he is not affected in the same way, is that correct?
There is not as much research on bromethylene and colacalciferol, but the research that's out there says that secondary impacts to wildlife are incredibly low. So very unlikely that, you know, that a bobcat would pick those up and die from it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alright, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, and then as a matter of record, Stephanie, if I recall, for the proclamation, I can do that, that doesn't require council approval, right? I just need to read that into the, into the record. So I will do that. Town of Kewa Island's Save Bobcats, Kewa Bobcats Week proclamation. Whereas Kewa is well-renowned for its bobcat population, which historically was one of the healthiest, densest bobcat populations in the country. Bobcats on Kewa Island have been tracked annually through using GPS collars since two thousand seven. And this study is the longest continuous study on bobcats in the world. And whereas bobcats play a vital role in the Kewa Island ecosystem by helping to control the island's deer and rodent populations, and whereas Kewa's bobcat population has declined from thirty to thirty-five to less than ten in the last three years. And whereas three adult bobcats have died directly from the lethal effects of anticoagulant rodenticides in the last fourteen months. Whereas the town of Kewa Island wishes to protect Kewa's remaining bobcats by eliminating the use of anticoagulant rodenticides on Kewa Island and encouraging the use of non-toxic rodent control methods or non-anticoagulant rodenticides. You made this a tongue twister.
I know.
To protect the wildlife and other natural resources of Kewa Island. And whereas the town of Kewa Island wishes to encourage residents, businesses, and pest control companies to take the Bobcat Guardian pledge to stop the use of anticoagulant rodenticides at www.savethebobcats.com. And now therefore I, Craig Weaver, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the town of Kewa Island, do hereby proclaim October eleven to October seventeen, two thousand twenty, as Save Kewa Bobcats Week. In witness whereof, I have here two sent my hand to this the sixth day of October two thousand twenty in the town of Kewa Island. Petra signed this and put this in this. Alright, thank you. We've got two, well, actually, you stay up, because we're, let's move. It's, I don't want to short shrift any of this. We still have a couple of big items, but-
I understand. I'll be, I'll be very brief.
Well, this is important. I don't wanna short it, so.
Yeah, well, I'm happy to answer questions. So obviously, you know, the issue of our deer numbers, we discussed back in April. The decision was made at that point to remove a hundred deer this fall and winter. And so obviously, we had to budget money to do that and order equipment. So we are working through all of that. And as it looks right now, we will have the necessary firearms by early December. We'd hope to get them sooner, but it's a process, because they're suppressed weapons and they're specially built. And believe it or not, there's a backlog on getting just about any part for any product in this country right now, be it freezers, firearms, whatever. Obviously due to the, you know, due to the pandemic. And so we're a little bit delayed there. We'll move forward with getting the permit and tags this month. So we'll have those on hand. The work will also be weather-dependent, so we need to do this, obviously, when it's not raining and the temperatures are cool at night.
Are the permits assured? Are we, are there any potential pickups there?
No. No.
How long does that have to get, Ken?
Forties, forties at night, you know, obviously, we'll be out for hours. The meat will be donated, so we need to make sure that it stays cool throughout the entire process. So that means that we will likely begin this work either in mid-December or early January. We should have everything we need by that point in time. The work should take, I will say, two weeks. It might take a week. And yeah, I think we discussed the protocols and methods at the April meeting, but if you have questions on those, I'm happy to answer those.
Could you go over the critical points? Cause I am getting lots of questions, like, what are we, do we kill, I'm sorry, do we cull? Those, what do we, what times of day, how is it being done, where? Where is it being done, who is it being done by? If you could just highlight those, that would be-
Okay. Yep, so we will focus the harvest on adult female deer. That's where we'll get our biggest impact on reducing numbers as quickly as possible.
For the record, you do not kill fawns.
Bucks?
Fawns.
Oh, no fawns. A female fawn would potentially, we might would harvest some female fawns later in the year in January. You get just as much impact on redu-, but a fawn in January, right, is sixty pounds and doesn't have spots and just looks like a deer at that point, right? It's almost a year old and so-
No baby fawns.
Right, yeah. No, no small deer, promised. And so the work will take place beginning in the evening before dark from tree stands and woodlots, where deer will be baited into those areas. They'll be harvested from tree stands by town staff. So town staff, in this case, means myself and Aaron, the assistant biologist. And then after that point, we will then use, we will be driving around in a vehicle to predetermined locations where we've also placed bait that we've surveyed to know they're a hundred percent safe shots, and we'll be harvesting deer in those areas. that we've surveyed to know they're 100% safe shots, and we'll be harvesting deer in those areas. And that work will go, you know, could go to midnight, could go to two in the morning. And then once we're finished for the night, obviously, all those deer go to the processor. He handles everything from there. Typically, the meat is donated to 180 Place, which is up in North Charleston. In other projects I've worked on, but if we wanted the meat to go somewhere else, we we probably could do that.
How close will you get to rest to properties, to personal properties?
I wouldn't say there there would be a defined distance, but every every location will be 100% safe. So probably not too close to residences, but you know, there there may be cases where a residence is within thirty or fifty yards of a of a harvest location. But but obviously, you know, and you know that, you know, I've I've been doing this in other communities for for twenty plus years. And so, you know, you you pick spots during daylight where you're going to be shooting from a certain spot, and you know where the deer will be, and you know what's behind the deer, which is a golf course, berm, or some some elevated feature, some feature that will basically stop a bullet if you miss. You assume that every shot you take, you will miss the deer. And so the shots will be 100% safe. We haven't picked the locations yet, but we will as it gets a little bit closer.
The deer that are culled, are they transported? When are they transported out and how are they transported out?
We haven't.
The real question is, will they be transported out in a discreet?
Yes. It will be discreet. I, you know, I would be surprised if, you know, I would not be surprised, I would be very surprised if if we go through this program and we have more than one or two people who notice that it's going on.
My point is obviously that we need to, we've all convinced ourselves, we need to do this. It's the right thing for the community, it's the right thing for public safety, it's the right thing for the deer we have in our population. Having said that, we also still do not need a social media post of, you know, vehicles leaving Kewa at five some morning with.
Yeah, you won't, you won't have that problem.
Deer, yeah, I would not want that.
Nope, neither would I. That will not be a problem.
Question? Thank you.
Sure.
Were we going to talk about just how are people going to be, you're going to cover the communication piece?
So we began communicating about this in April. And so it has been tied to, we announced the deer harvest, that's gone out in the eBlast, and it's been tied to every single one of the bobcat issues as well. Because they're obviously, they were compared together. And last quarter, there was an article in Town Notes about it. And so it would, my recommendation would be to just the next time we communicate and we have a more definitive timeframe to put that out, you know, general locations and certain weeks of whatever it is determined, just to let people know that it is going on and they could possibly hear, you know, activity in that regard and where what will happen with that meat. But other than that, providing any more detail could get, you know, become a public safety hazard, I feel like.
Yeah, you know, obviously, avoid this stuff is, you know, the I Kewa all of a sudden at, you know, one in the morning is, nobody's on at one in the morning, but at nine o'clock, it's like, are you hearing shots? I'm hearing shots, what are the shots, what's happening, how come nobody told, you know, that sort of, that just takes off.
Well, they're silenced, aren't they?
They're suppressed.
Suppressed, okay.
You'll be adhered if you're outside, if you're inside, you won't hear anything.
Anything else? No, thanks. All right. While you're up there, you're going to talk to us about state accommodations promotional fund.
I am. Patriot, would you do lectern to their Diaz in the? Okay. There we go. Okay, so as requested, I've prepared council consideration for some exploratory options for how we might utilize the 30% promotional fund derived from state tax. So just a real quick brief review of state accommodations, because I think sometimes it's confusing, but these revenues are distributed to the town by the state, which they're generated from the tax on tourist pay. The tourists pay on hotel and rental charges for accommodations when they stay on the island. They come from the state to the town. The first $25,000 must be allocated to the general fund, and the remaining funds are distributed as follows. 5% of the remaining balance must be allocated to the general fund. The 30% must be remaining balance must be allocated to a tourism program, which is awarded by town council currently going to CBB. And then the remaining balance plus earned interest must be allocated to the special fund for tourism related expenses, which we know as our state accommodation tax committee. And they make recommendations to this council for your approval. So the 30%, the law states that it must be gone, it must go to a special fund and used for advertising and promotion to increase tourism. It can go to one or more organizations, typically, it's a chamber, visitors bureau, regional tourism commission, or something of that sort. The requirement is that they must have an existing ongoing tourism program. We can, as a municipality, create one, but it would have to have the same membership status as ATAX does, state ATAX does. And you must be able to show that you can develop an effective program. And part of that would be, you know, at the start of fiscal, whoever the receiving entity is, they must submit for approval, budget planned expenditures, and and report on it the following after the fiscal year. And ultimately, the expenditures are reviewed by the state's Tourism Expenditure Review Committee. And as I said before, our our avenue for that right now is the CBB. This is their annual distribution history for the last 10 years.
This is what we've given them?
That's correct. And so I partnered with our field representative for the Municipal Association of South Carolina, and we did a survey, and it was a voluntary survey, and the jurisdictions provided here participated and provided us with what they did with their 30%. And so we had three major categories. One is what we're currently doing, the Chamber of Commerce or Visitors Bureau, and all of the jurisdictions there go primarily through that method, except for Folly Beach, who also has a, what they call a direct marketing organization or a nonprofit that they funnel certain funds to as well. And the ones with the double stars are created, you know, they created their own from the municipality. The third column represents, there's several jurisdictions, or three jurisdictions that participated, there may be more, that just didn't participate in the survey, but that they operated internally. And so I think eventually it was determined that the law simply says nonprofit and that the town itself, as a government municipality, qualifies for that. It just needs a standalone accounting fund and a certain, you know, different boards and and kind of advisory mechanism.
Stephanie, just from my own education, the second column says that Georgetown, Lancaster, Walterboro, and Conway take, what they would be giving the 30% to a separate organization, they're spending it internally, is that correct?
That's correct, but they've created, because they're in this column.
They're doing it within the standards required.
That's right.
Folly Beach is doing a part and a part.
That's correct.
In the last column, I'm not quite sure I understand how the last column is different than the second column.
The last.
Well, they're saying that a town department.
The town is doing without having set up a third party, basically.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Yes, and you know, Greenwood has actually been doing, I spoke with them specifically, they've been doing it this way since 2017, and none of their expenditures have ever been questioned by the review board. So it seems that they're really more concerned about where those those dollars are spent rather than.
Who spends them.
Right. So I've prepared for you just a couple of options to review. This, the DMO option, which is a direct marketing organization, you could create it with a nonprofit 501(c)(3) status. Obviously, this is useful if we're going to solicit private donations. It's recommended that we have a tax attorney set that up. It will require separate liability and DNO insurance coverage and separate tax reporting. It would cost in between three to six thousand to establish, and a timeline for execution would be approximately six months or more. It could be a little more costly if the organization is going to have employees, which you would need to determine when you set it up. Or the other option would be to create a nonprofit in name only. And the town attorney or staff could establish, and it has, you have to have the same liability insurance and DNO insurance. And that would cost between two to five thousand to establish, and it's three to six months time to execute that. It's a little bit less complicated. And then the timeline or the process below is is the general process for setting up a nonprofit, whether you have 501(c)(3) status or not.
So a nonprofit in name only, that's essentially the Greenwood approach, is that what they're doing?
Correct. Internal options, one and two, you could go through your already existing state accommodation tax committee. They could directly manage or create the tourism program, they could act as the governing body. It's essentially cost free and could be executed by amending their the SATX ordinance. Logistically speaking, those that are currently on that committee, you know, they're, they have either other positions and or volunteers. I'm not really sure that the tasks and the workload associated with doing that, that they would be willing to do. The other option is, of course, like other things that we've done, is create a subcommittee to do that work. And then they could report to to the SATX committee for approval. I still think that there's going to be a lot of work associated with that, not sure if volunteers would be able to or be willing to provide that. Internal option three is the town creates their own bureau or department. You could hire a director of tourism, and it would just be a separate department like we already have with the departments here, the reports to the town administrator. That could be executed by your approval or by an ordinance or a creation of one of the nonprofit models we previously previously discussed.
Could you go back a couple of slides to the one that had Folly on it? So they're they're similar to us in size.
Who is?
Folly.
Folly.
Folly. Yeah, so they're only doing a piece of this, and they're similar to us in size and smaller than us in terms of the amount of money they're dealing with. So do you have a sense of how they, from the staffing standpoint, have they hired staff? Or do they have people like yourself doing triple duty rather than double duty?
They have an advisory board, and then they do have town staff that aid in that process. They, there's a little bit less than ours would be.
Yeah, they don't have as much, they don't collect as much.
The funding would be different, and so they kind of determined that initially, they were kind of one of the first in the region to break off from CBB totally, so they kind of took the different, the more official approach was to create this nonprofit. And then they didn't, it's my understanding that the when they actually started getting involved in the marketing strategy or promotional and tourism program, they didn't really feel like they had tons, the the right amount of funds to do an effective program. And so they kind of backed off and kind of put more more effort into their CBB. So right now, they separated a third to the CBB, like just contribution only. And then they actually use the CBB for another, for the other third, and actually do paid placement for advertisement through the CBB contacts and their agencies. And then a third they do on their own through separate agencies and regions. So still, they're giving two thirds to CBB, but.
But they're directing a third of that, they're telling CBB how to spend it, correct?
That's correct.
Which is an interesting way to do it.
It is.
Yeah.
Of all these options that you've studied, what makes the most sense to you?
This one, option four.
Oh, okay, I didn't, what a great segue.
Yeah, thank you. So honestly, after looking at all of this, it looks like the easiest and path of least resistance is maybe creating a tourism committee. Based on the ATAX law, we would still need to follow the same membership structure as SATX committee. This committee could serve as an advisory committee formed by ordinance or informally, just by approval. And they would essentially develop and create a tourism program and marketing strategy. They have a separate accounting fund and do the reporting pre and post fiscal year. It's similar, it's very similar to how we already do arts council. They're, you know, they they kind of operate as their own department anyways, because it's such a different genre of things that they do. And this would still need a staff member, and this is where I went and go into a little bit more tasks that I saw kind of arising out of my research would be, you would need someone to serve as the point of contact for agencies to to deal with the creation and distribution of marketing assets, manage the budget, measure effectiveness, and the committee coordination. And so here, I've just created like a little mock committee of who that might be. These are people that are already on the island doing marketing of some sort and or communications PR. So that would be my recommendation for this committee. And then I just gave one more slide is to like.
Does that still require that that committee is operating inside of a 503(c), or is this more the department approach?
This is the department or committee approach.
We're essentially the owner of this committee and they're operating through our nonprofit, it will kick us a nonprofit too.
Right, right. So just as an example of what you might could do, if you choose to go this route or or direct staff to go this route, then maybe the first year you would, you know, we would always contribute to CBB because they they do, there is a lot of value. And one of the perks of living out here is you are close to, and and I think that it does factor into when you go to buy invested property here. So maybe you would take the first, like 15%, whatever tourism entity you decided. You would establish a scope of work, establish the entity. There would need to be some creation of marketing assets, because currently, everyone's marketing themselves or the resort's doing their part. And so I think based on the housing study recommendation of lifestyle marketing, that looks a little different than just, you know, one prominent entity being marketed. So and then, you know, depending on if you felt like the effectiveness of the first year, you could, you know, slowly reduce it to wherever we felt like, or wherever council felt like we were, you know, had kind of hit a plateau, and this is all we want to do and be involved with, and the rest goes to CBB. So this is just an example.
It's a good way to.
Very good.
Sort of grow into it, find out what your mistakes are before you make.
Right, right. So that is all I had, is there any questions?
So this isn't, I'm here as a decision making today, but what we're trying to do from last meeting, this meeting, and maybe the next is to sort of slay some direction. So what's? What's your, I'm just interested in your reaction, again, we're not deciding, but is this a, is this a direction that we should continue to be?
I just had a question, that that seven member board, the idea is then that they would allocate money, and if they disagree, it's a majority decision or something?
Which one, if the state accommodation tax were to take it on?
Your option.
Your option, they would have a seven member board, right? And I mean, someone has to make the decision where the money goes.
Right.
It would be that board by majority?
Yes, and so then that what essentially would happen is that the whole 30% would go to the committee. We would divvy that out to CBB, and then the funds left over, that that committee would actually be involved in the creation of the marketing strategy or and or the promotional materials and what where that money got allocated to.
And if you do this, I envision, whether it's, I mean, if it were a 503(c), you have to do this, but even if it's not, you can model it. Essentially, you need to create a set of bylaws, you need to, you know, identify and define what is the scope. How are we going to operate, how are we going to make decisions? I mean, all of that becomes the the work that has to be created. In a 503(c), legally, you have to do it. So I would envision them doing that.
Why would we, of those options, why would we, given Kewa, of course, is a major, major tourist destination, why would we not have the Kewa Tourism Bureau, for example? That's your option three, I think. That's your option three, I think.
Right, option three. Why wouldn't we have it? We, we can, it's just that it's a little bit.
I know, but you didn't recommend it.
Well, I think that it, it kind of honestly would, it would create a different department. So we would need to talk about that a little bit and that would, you would obviously have to hire a different staff member to do so. Or you could, I suppose you could create the department and have it morphed into one of your already existing departments. And you don't have to not create the department and choose the committee, you know? You could do either or. It was just a different way of looking at it.
You could also argue too that, that at the end of the day with the, you could argue with the marketing expertise that you have there between knowing those other players, that you're pulling Leah from, from Kika, you're pulling Bri, probably Brian from the resort. It's kind of like when people go to Shark Tank, you know, they, they want, they want Mark Cuban. Why would you not want to go to approach that actually gets you that kind of talent on the inside?
Sure. And where I think it makes them, oh, sorry, I was kind of like, go ahead.
Never. This is a lot of information that we've received today and we're supposed to make a decision on it right now?
No, no, no.
It's just discussion.
We're just talking.
Okay, so we'll get all this information.
We're just really getting a sense of, is this like something that people are going, yeah, let's continue to move forward?
Because I thought you said there was a decision that had to be made today? Okay, thank you.
If this were my, my druthers, I guess here's what I would recommend. I mean, ultimately, because we're so close to the end of this term, that the new council has got to decide whether they actually are going to trigger it, to do it. Because if we, if we create it and they don't have the interest or desire or they have other properties to actually get this created and running, it doesn't make sense. But on the other hand, what I would prefer to do is lead them right up to it. To go ahead, we've got a couple of months, is to actually do the work of getting us right to the edge of having a, an entity there so that if they do then decide to go forward with it, a lot of the legwork has been done. If we don't do that and we just now sit with a new council in December, January, with all the things they've got to do to get up to speed and what, you know, and, and knowing that our budget year and our SATAX decisions are occurring in.
Well, SATAX meeting goes in July, August, don't they?
No, no, it was in April.
What time flies.
So, so we would really put them in a, if we just stopped, we would put them in a position that they wouldn't get this triggered next year.
Yeah, it's a long lead time.
So, you know, my reaction is to, is that, that we continue the momentum and then just leave it so that ultimately enough's done that a new council could turn around and say, yeah, thanks, we, we're going to run with this or, you know, not now.
Sure.
But that's, that's only one person's thought, so.
And Klaus, just to provide you with a little bit, what I've, what I've seen from the jurisdictions that participated and provided more input is that when they create a bureau or a department, that usually gets a name. It gets its own marketing and branding website and things like that. So it's more of a, like a, like a visit Kiowa or explore Kiowa kind of entity. And so it actually moves apart from the town, but you wouldn't necessarily have to create that department to also have those outlets and opportunities. Does that?
Yeah, I, I would, for years, I want to do this for years. I think this is the only thing that makes sense. You've got to control your own destiny. And I would highlight that HRA, this was one of their primary recommendations.
That's correct.
They, they felt that at some point as the partners decreased their lifestyle spending, somebody better fill a breach.
Well, there's a lot of marketing goes on for the resort, for the resort. And I understand that, that's what I would do if I were the resort. But the lifestyle issue that HRA raised is the bigger issue, I think, for the town, which is are we trying to also then attract permanent residents? Maybe start with through, you know, temporary residency. But I, I like the idea of controlling where some of this money goes.
Well, what I would recommend or ask is that you essentially allow the town administrator and both Stephanie's over the next month to both individually touch back with each of you just now that you've absorbed this, to get any additional one-on-one input and thoughts. And then based on that, that we, you know, we, we have not made a decision that in fact we will implement this, but that we will, we would endorse the staff to continue moving forward towards creating the, the entity and the manpower and the structure that would actually be used and that could then be essentially kicked over to a new council to consider. That, that would be.
Sounds good.
Now Stephanie, I'm obviously using your name as the person I'm dumping it to, so is that okay?
Yeah.
Either Stephanie, either Stephanie.
Okay.
I have to read early today.
I understand.
I knew you said we'd be done by this time.
It's okay. I don't always tell the truth. Okay, thank you Stephanie for that. Okay, we're at our last item, which is a hearing on the suspension and proposed revocation of business license number SBL nineteen dash zero one two four nine two. And the first question I have is do we, I have two things. One, do we have all the parties? Will we be moving forward with this item?
Counsel.
Okay, all right.
It appears. It would appear that the license holder is not shown out.
That's my question. Okay, so, so we'll be moving forward with the town with the building services?
Presentation.
Discussion and, and case. What we may not have, unless it happens while the case is going on, is that the other party may not be here representing themselves.
Correct.
Could I ask that we adjourn for, let's say, it's been long, maybe five minutes? So that the council can just grab another drink and do whatever else they need to do? I don't know how long this will take. Is that okay for your time?
When you say drink.
This is water. We've been, we've been going unusually long for us, so I thought we'd take a, just a quick couple of minutes. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. No, no. We're, we're doing a restroom run and a coffee, coffee.
Well, we are still live.
We are still live, just that you're, I need to. Three minutes, no longer than three minutes.
Do you want any water? You want me to grab you a bottle of water?
No, no, thank you, DeRota, I'm not, I'm like a camel, I go for it.
And then in terms of, you would swear to it with us?
Probably yes.
So who would swear it? Logistically, where, you know, I would stand there and then back up and that turns.
Yeah, yeah, unfortunately, we usually, I'm usually up there, but y'all are, I'll give the stand to you.
Okay. Or do I have to be a good like?
I honestly, I kind of almost, you know, I encourage them to. I don't, you know.
If you're a female or something.
Yes, well, honestly.
That could be all code words from I.
More dealing with, it's going to be an attorney.
Right.
Making legal arguments and, you know, that's.
Okay, which is fine.
I mean, I think this is.
And you, you know, you've got big exhibits.
I think it's pretty scripty.
We do know that he received his letter, right?
We, we confirm that.
Okay, it was circulated, it was received, yeah.
And this is business's test.
Because it's so unusual for someone to have to come fight for, you know, for business license because the guest make a lot of business on that. So their life is just gone and they're not going to, and they're not going to fight for it?
He's been out here since two thousand thirteen and I'm aware of him probably before that in Charleston County.
Yeah, and I'm just surprised that he's not coming to try to fight to have his license. Don't have it. Hi, nice to meet you. Yeah, nice to meet you. Well, maybe he thinks that it's not going to, you know, any good if he's planning on killing it.
Maybe or.
I mean. I just think you're feeling much better when you feel if you actually show up.
Right, and, and come and say your, your excuses.
Yes.
And put that, either, either with it or without it, but get up and say, you know, I'm sorry, I won't do it again, or something.
And I do think maybe what else might be looking for, we have, is, is if you have any thoughts about how long revocation should last. I'm real open, do you?
Actually, might not have, but we don't know that. The camera was focused only high.
I knew it was going to be a busy meeting.
Okay, are we all, we're all about.
Sure. No, no. Did she tell you it was a very what?
Okay, are we ready to reconvene? Okay, Joe, I'm going to initially turn this over to you to guide us.
Right, and I'm going to try to be pretty brief here.
Yeah, I can. Drag it out. Let's keep going. Well, I can assure the other council members that in, in my time on council, I've never experienced, we have never had one of these come up, so we're not familiar with the process. So we're going to need to rely on you to, to kind of keep us on the right.
And they really don't happen a whole lot. I've been through one. There are very few rules you have to follow. There's a lot of flexibility for council in, in all aspects of this proceeding, really. Really what's required is, is that the license holder be given notice of a hearing and an opportunity to be heard. Our ordinance specifically states that he can present evidence, have an attorney and cross witnesses. Since they have not appeared, apparently, you know, that's not, none of that's going to be happening. But he's had the opportunity, yeah, notice. There's also now, I, I just introduced Kristi Varnado, who we have hired to represent staff. The idea being, you guys are essentially the judge here and I do want to keep the prosecution and the judge apart. It's called ex parte communications in the court world, so we're trying not to have those. All the communications, the presentation is open at this meeting, right? I am remaining with, on your side of the aisle, so to speak, to help you with any procedural issues, should they arise. Not to present, not to advocate for staff or anything like that.
Is a transcript kept of this and?
Only if requested.
And is that evidence in any future act? My point is simply that the council members need to understand that every comment counts.
Yes, it's open and if someone wants a transcript, they can get it. The ordinance does require a decision in writing. You guys can make that decision, hopefully today. And then I can work with you on getting something in writing. Probably doesn't have to be too extensive. So that's kind of the only rules that we're dealing with. Otherwise, it's pretty much an open field. I, I, I just now discussed some of these issues with Ms. Varnado. I'm just suggesting that they get up, staff gets up, makes its presentation. Y'all can ask some questions if you feel the need to. And since we don't have anyone opposing, you can deliberate, make your decision.
All right, well, let's proceed then.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead. You raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And thank you, counsel. I'm presenting today based on non-compliance issues involving Toby Tyler Home Builders, owner, obviously Tony, or Toby Tyler. The recommendation by me is a revocation of his business license based on the non-compliance issues that you have in the letter there, various tickets. And I'll, I'm not going to go over every ticket, but I'm going to just give you a real brief history of the dealings the town has had with Mr. Toby Tyler and what has transpired since. Toby Tyler in the beginning, as I stated, I've, I've dealt with Tyler Home Builders since two thousand thirteen, since we actually formed the building department. I'm sure Toby Tyler was out here practicing under, you know, before then with Charleston County being the jurisdiction, but I don't have any information to that effect. Toby Tyler's been a licensed contractor in the state since nineteen ninety nine. I can tell you Toby Tyler's very familiar with all our ordinances. Also very familiar with the software that we currently use in our permitting. He has submitted permits in the past. For whatever reason, occasionally he decides to not obtain the necessary permit, whether it be from us, Kika, ARB, they've all basically voiced when this issue came up and I told them the avenue that I was taking, that they've had similar problems in the past. Toby Tyler, in the violations he's received, has paid well over five thousand dollars in violations and it didn't start that way. Toby Tyler's, when we caught him basically operating without a permit or a business license, we would simply, more so the permits and not the business license, he did get violations for those. But in, in the early stages, it was more of an education, hey, just go get your permit, get in compliance so we can do the inspections and we can move this process on. As those non-compliance issues continued, we decided to take more drastic measures and started issuing summons tickets. Like I said, he's paid over five thousand dollars in summons tickets. And most people would kind of get the fact that you're on our radar. Once we find you, we do keep an active, basically island search on you as far as making sure that you're in compliance. That doesn't seem to affect them any. I thought that we could turn them around. I thought that, I mean, we have no, nothing negative as far as his abilities as a contractor from any resident. Nobody has complained about this guy. So that leads you to, in my mind, I mean, why? Why would, I mean, our permits aren't that expensive, you know, and then you pass off that cost to the homeowner anyway. So it's not even coming out of your pocket, so to speak. But if we could go, and all the tickets that are under, I think it's Civic Two, I mean, he's forfeited the bond. He's never fought, am I missing something? He's never fought any of the cases. He's paid the bond upfront and has moved on. There's a prime example today, he's not even here to testify on his own behalf. So, does this actually work? Nope. Yeah, exhibit three. No, maybe.
Bruce, while we're waiting now, is there a question?
Sure.
Does he do business in other jurisdictions?
I don't have that information, but most contractors don't, you know, for their own livelihood, we're not just operating one jurisdiction.
Be throughout the county?
We're not hooked up, sorry, John. Uh, but no, I would assume he's operating in other jurisdictions.
Another question I have while John is working with that is, you know, some of these violations are without a permit and some are without a license. So, I'm under the impression you get a license that's good for a year. So, is he failing to get a license for an entire calendar year, or are we catching him early in a year and?
We're catching him early in a year. It hadn't, hadn't gone for an entire year that he's been without a business license. When you obtain a business license, you're also issued a contractor's license at the same time. So, historically, it's been a calendar year, and we'll catch him, you know, long after the cutoff date, and we are up. Um, and so, yeah, he. He's just a person that wants to, I guess, not conform to our regulations. I mean, he'll come up with a number of excuses, and it's, you know, I either forgot, or I didn't know I needed one. And when everybody knows that he's, is just not being truthful. I mean, he's been a contractor for many years, and like I said, knows the system inside and out.
Okay.
Um, so, I don't, you know, I don't know. I don't have any excuses for him. Exhibit three is the latest one. This is two sixty-four Darrell Open. This originally came in as permit submittal, has turned out to be a substantial improvement with the renovation work that they were doing. That came in on July sixteenth. July seventeenth, I sent him an email stating that it was a spent, a substantial improvement, and that we were gonna need an appraisal to move forward, uh, basically to offset the county numbers. Historically, the county assessments as far as home value are low, and appraisal will come in at two to three times higher than what the county's assessed it at. So, we utilize those, those appraisals to offset from having to meet, you know, bring the house up to current standards and that type of thing. So, I asked for that. I didn't receive a response. So, the next mode of action would be to, uh, once they submit for a permit, it's valid, that permit application is valid for a hundred and eighty days. If we don't see any action happening in that hundred and eighty day period, or shortly thereafter, then we void out that permit. But that's particular time, I had about five to six submittals in my queue that we needed to actually go back and take a look at and decide, you know, is the prog, project moving forward? If it's not moving forward, why is it not moving forward? And sometimes homeowners put a project on hold for various reasons. Here with this COVID thing, a lot of times it's, hey, we, we just can't get the material that's required to finish out the project or even start the project. This particular home at two sixty-four Darrell Open, or when we finally found out that he was actually actively working and damn near completion on this project, uh, I had Sharon Johnson had contacted the homeowner, Mr. Patel. And we inquired from Mr. Patel, is your project on hold? Have you started the project? You know, what's the status? And bottom line was, he said, well, I'm, you know, I'm within a month of completion. Well, there's been electrical work, there's been plumbing work, and as you can see, it's quite a substantial renovation project. And none of this work has been inspected. He just recently, we gave, recently obtained a permit, he did submit an appraisal finally. And, um, I contacted Mr. Patel myself, and basically, I thought the conversation was gonna go very bad for me. It's because I was gonna explain to him that I can't even inspect this project, 'cause everything I need to look at is now covered up. And without going in and doing some really major damage to this house and opening walls back up, there's no way we can even come close to certifying that the work is done correctly. Moving forward as of yesterday, um, my inspector actually went to this house, and he opened up the contractor, Toby, or one of his people, opened up one of the walls behind this basically walk-in shower. And all he looked at is where the piping for the valves in the shower, and it was turned down. Uh, the piping wasn't supported the way it needed to be supported by code, so he didn't even meet minimum code standards. To make matters even worse, Toby Tyler admitted to me that the people that actually installed this work were his employees, and not licensed subcontract labor, which is a violation of our ordinance, is a violation of state law. Why he went down this avenue, I don't know. He's had subcontractors in the past. I, I just don't know. The. The issues when I told Mr. Patel that I would not be able to actually certify anything that was installed in this house, and I explained to Mr. Patel that while this doesn't appear to be a problem, possibly, you know, for the homeowner, uh, on face value, if you tried to sell this home and a prospective buyer said, well, has there been any additional work here? And that homeowner says, oh, yeah, we renovated. Oh, do you have the inspection list of the approved inspections that were passed? So, I know that the renovation work was done, at least within code compliance? He's not gonna have that. And that was our last conversation. Now, whether he's changed his mind, he's decided to open up walls, I don't know yet. I haven't had a conversation with Mr. Patel since then. The, do we have the pictures, Petra, of the ones I just sent you this afternoon?
Yeah.
Okay. This was discovered after we sent the letter out. Uh, this is two thirty Eagle Point, um, generator stand. As you can see, it's quite substantial. The brickwork matches the house. There are no permits on this. Um, in fact, I don't believe the ARB has anything as well. The generator is in place. The generator is hooked up. Uh, that means there's a gas line running to that generator. Uh, there's electrical transfer switches that were installed. None of which has any permits. Obviously, no inspections.
Are you able to inspect this work?
We can inspect this work because it is pretty much exterior to the building, and it's pretty easy to check. Even if we have to, because the transfer switch is obviously tied to the panels inside the house. And we can certify that wire through metering and check it, um, so that, we can inspect this. We are now trying to figure out who did the work. Uh, we haven't got that information as of yet.
Did you inspect this, Bruce? Did you, you haven't done it yet, but you're capable of doing it?
We're capable of doing, yes. Um, and that's just another example of what's going on.
But this is, but this is Toby Tyler's.
Toby Tyler, we have.
But you're just not sure which sub or his own employees did the actual work?
Exactly.
Is he a licensed general contractor?
He is a licensed residential home builder.
Residential.
Uh, when you say general contract, that refers more to commercial type work. But he is a residential home builder, and like I said, he's been one since ninety-nine. It's gotten to the point where all the entities are having issues with him. It's not just us. Eddie Monahan was gonna be on, um, video chat, but he's probably going home by now. Um.
But just so I'm clear, though, even if they aren't, I assume under our, our rules and ordinance, the only thing we can hold him, I assume our judgment has to be driven by.
Yeah, it's, it's driven by our ordinances, yeah. Yeah, it's not driven by anybody else. No, it's just a matter of reference, but the, you know, I mean, as we go through this, I mean, it's, I mean, you see the tickets, you see the pictures.
So, Bruce, if I can ask, if you were to characterize then the driving reason for wanting to take this action, is it the, is it the sheer number of issues? Is it the fact that, that in your mind, there's, you know, that there's five or six are okay, but at some point, he's exceeded a number, or is it the potential damage and injury he's doing to the property or to the resident by not properly having these things?
It has more to do.
What is the basis and, and are you comfortable that you can delineate him, differentiate him from? I mean, I assume we have other contractors that aren't great. Is there something about those issues for him that differentiate him from any other contractor? Is, is there's no one on here that's worse?
The difference, uh, between him and most other contractors, most other contractors are following what our guidelines are, what our regulations are.
And that's what I'm asking.
And, and unfortunately, he's done everything to evade our regulations. Even the contractors that are new to the island, that are coming in from like Buford or somewhere like that. I mean, they come here, they ask questions, they wanna know how it's, how it needs to be done, 'cause every jurisdiction is different. You know, they have different, not so much the ordinance is kinda close, but as far as their policies and how they do things will be different in most places. So, they'll come and ask questions, which is fine, and most of these do everything they possibly can to do things correctly. Um, Toby Tyler, on the other hand, is moving in the other direction. I mean, he's, he's been caught being non-compliant. He's paid his fines, he continues to be non-compliant, and pays more fines. So, I mean, it gets to the point where you just, you don't have any other avenues to drive it home to this fella that you got to be in compliance.
Bruce, um, just one thought. He's clearly not been overly impressed by, um, um, fines or the small niceties of getting permits and so on. He's just done his work, right? So, if the council were to decide to revoke his business license eventually, uh, what makes you think that's gonna impress him? Like, like?
How do you enforce it?
How do you enforce it?
Because he's, he's clearly getting on the island without a business license.
Yeah, once we revoke his business license, then Kiowa and Community Association will close the gate to him.
Well, he's been getting through the gate because he's had no license. I mean, that's a couple of the violations, so how is he getting on the island now?
'Cause he's had some ongoing projects, and he's, he had ongoing projects in the way he was getting on the island is he would go get his pass to get on. And unfortunately, KICA didn't realize from us what was going on. There was a gap in communication at that point. And I understand when we go through the business license renewal period, that's, you know, months, we occasionally will have a contractor, you know, they, they might come in compliance in a week or two after, after that cutoff period, but we're talking months down the road before we caught up with him. And then by the time we notified KICA, I mean, he, obviously, he was already there.
So, KICA will, will not issue him a gate pass, is that correct?
He will not be allowed on the island at that point by KICA.
Well, if a homeowner calls a pass in form, would he not be able to squeak through the system?
Yes, unfortunately. Yes, yes, yeah, he could.
Bruce, um, related to these questions, it seems to me, the reason the town has building codes and has your group as inspectors is to see that construction is done on the island in a safe and secure manner, right?
Correct.
He's repeatedly, it appears, been constructing things with no inspections. Therefore, the town has no sense that what's being done is either done properly or safely. And he has violated that again and again and again. The rest of it, to me, is not very consequential. He's, he's operating in a way that involves a lack of trust, a public safety issue, and repeated, repeated violations of things he already knows he's supposed to do. We can't trust him.
I agree.
Simple case.
Bruce, is a, is a license suspension, so is that a death sentence? I mean, is there, when we revoke, is that then without recourse, or can you come back in three years and get a new? I don't know what our.
He, he, yeah, I'm gonna let Joe take that one.
So, is he gone, is, is, is he forever unable to do business as a builder on Kiowa? Or can he turn around and wait four years and then come back and seek the license and he's okay?
Yeah, we don't have any provisions that restrict, uh, I think it's gonna be up to council to make that call, how they want to do that. I will say the model code, uh, this provision didn't make it, the current model code, this pro, the, a provision that didn't make it into our Kiowa's model code. One of the bases for denying a license application is you've had your license revoked in the last twelve months by any jurisdiction. So, sometimes there's a little guidance out there. We don't have any. I would suggest that, I, I, I've been thinking about this a little bit. You can put, I, I would give some thought to putting some, you can't reapply for twelve months or whatever amount of time.
So, that might be a discretion we have.
It is definitely a discretion that you have. Uh, or you can't reapply without approval by staff or council. Um, you could go with any of those routes.
Another question, Bruce, does he currently have customers, does he have projects right now that are partially finished that are being impacted at the moment by the action that has been taken?
We have decided to allow him to finish those projects so it wouldn't cause a hardship to the homeowner. Like Mr. Patel, for instance. I mean, his project is so far along, and this.
Two or three, or ten or twenty, what's the?
Um, that's, that's probably about half a dozen.
Oh, he's doing pretty well for an unlicensed.
Yeah, yeah, that, um, not half a dozen he doesn't have permits for. I mean, that's, he got a half a dozen projects going on. Yeah, so, and some of them are small things and others are a little bit bigger. But this, this renovation project is probably the biggest one that he's currently doing. Yeah, but then again, you know, it's, we're doing the homeowner in injustice by allowing him to stay on the island, as far as my opinion goes.
How do you, and again, it's a procedural issue, but how do you stop him from taking a new project while he still has access to the island?
They, they, KICA and ARB have already been notified not to issue him anymore.
Oh, I know, but he's working without, so I mean, my, my question is, how do you know that once we say, if we say, you know, your, your license is revoked, how do we have any confidence that says he doesn't go out and get another job that he doesn't permit?
He, the entities will stop him, but as far as a homeowner calling in a pass and having him come out, I don't have an answer for that one.
Joe, you have any, any insight? It's just a tough nut, I think.
No, it, it, and I would just say that what we gotta decide today is, is what we wanna do, and then, and then we'll cross the bridge.
Can, can we get, can the council get a list of the projects that are currently open so that we have it as of this date? Which ones are okay versus, uh, all of a sudden, an address that shows up in a month that we didn't know anything about?
Yes, we have that ability.
Okay. Joe, is a point then? Joe, is a point then of process, are there additional inquiries, additional information or evidence that we need to be seeking to ensure that we've heard the, the facts properly?
Yeah, I, I just want to clarify, based on, on the notice, it's my understanding, he's had at least 10 violations in the last three years?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and have you ever sought to revoke anyone's license?
In the 20 years I've been doing this, the answer is no.
And we currently, or in that period of time, we have nobody with a similar record of outstanding violations for whom you've chosen not to violate.
No, most people receive a summons ticket, especially, you know, a thousand dollar summons ticket, that usually gets their attention, and they come in compliance.
If you don't, I just want to make a record-
Certainly, Ms. Parnam, yes.
Yeah, so if you would just, exhibit one is the notice that was sent to Mr. Tyler to, to give him notice of this hearing, and you have sort of patient that he received the notice, correct?
We do.
Okay.
Excuse me, can you just go up with yourself and record it for me?
Sure.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So hi, I'm Kristy Barnado, and so as I was asking, I just wanted to put into the record, the exhibit one is the notice of hearing given to Mr. Tyler. Mr., stakeholder will say that verifies that he has received the notice, so we have the notice properly delivered. And then just to make the record clear, exhibit one is the notice, exhibit two are the several tickets, and exhibit three are photographs that were discussed on the record.
And Bruce, can you affirm all of that, since you're the witness under oath?
Yes, that statement that was made by the attorney is very much correct.
And Bruce, the significance of three, the pictures? Because when I first looked at them, it's like, okay, but what's the purpose? Is that what you're trying to demonstrate there is the type and magnitude of the work that he is doing that should have, because of what it is, required permitting and inspection and didn't? Is that, it's demonstrating that there was in fact these projects?
That is correct.
Is that the intent of three?
That is correct.
So, is that all the questions? Staff?
I mean, from council?
Another question, and it relates to what we just discussed. So one option is for council to revoke the license, can we revoke the license for a period of time?
Yes.
So you cannot apply until this day.
Dan, can you speak to that?
I'm sorry. The question was, if we were to potentially revoke the license revoked to this, can we do it for a period of time where you may not apply until a specific date?
Yes.
Thanks, Joe.
All right. So, it's a point of order in how we discuss and ultimately how we, for the record, make our decision, are we open for, open discussion, do we need to be discussing off of a proposed action?
I, I think as long as the discussions are factual in nature, I, my sense is there's not really any legal questions that can't be answered, but yeah, I, I would, if someone wants to make a proposal that the license should be revoked, I would do that, and we could take a vote on that, and then we could discuss some terms.
Yeah, because it strikes me, there are two questions here, the question is, do we, do we in fact concur that a revocation of the license is appropriate?
Yes.
If we do, then the second question becomes, is that essentially a permanent revocation? Or is there a desire to put some term limit on that? So we obviously have to reach the first question first.
Yes, sir, exactly.
Okay. So that should start with a, a proposal?
Yes, and, yes, I, I would almost prefer that one of you guys make the proposal and-
I, I would propose that we, we find cause for revoking the license of Toby Tyler Construction. I would hold off on the time period until after the discussion on-
Sure.
-the revocation.
And a point of question, since one of our council members had to leave, there are four of us, does this require than a three, three-person majority?
Yes.
Okay.
And is a second, is this a motion or is this a proposal?
I, proposal.
Okay.
Really what y'all are discussing is what's going to have to be reduced to writing anyways.
Okay.
So it's as much guide me-
Okay.
At, at what that writing decision, that written decision is going to look like.
Well, then let me then ask the question, Councilman Wyatt has, has proposed this, so I will just go down the table. Dan, your support or reaction to that proposal?
I support that proposal.
Okay.
Same.
And you revert? Okay.
Yep.
So we will then, with that, take a vote, all in favor of supporting the proposal to revoke the license, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Then the second question is, will there be, do we foresee providing an opportunity? And if so, after what period of time for the firm to be able to seek and be awarded a new business license? And do we see this as a permanent, or do we believe, based on what we see here, that we would be open, whether it be two years, three years, five years, I don't know, I'd, would we want to give the opportunity for the person to someday do business back on the island?
I think whatever time period, I mean, I actually think it could be, it could be a year, I mean, we just, what we really want to do is change behavior, not, not, you know, put someone out of, out of business necessarily, but I would make that contingent on, on no offenses being committed in the meantime. I mean, not being caught again.
If he doesn't have a license, there can't be any offenses.
Heck yeah. He can be caught doing something, you know what I mean? Not an offense, but a whatever.
He's worked without a license.
Yeah.
I hear that, I, my concern a little bit about him is that he has knowledgeably and willful continued to violate what he knows of the standards. And given that, I would say he shouldn't be allowed to reapply for a period of not less than three years. If it hurts his business, he has to.
My only, I have a question for legal first, is, is can you put such a harsh punishment on that it somehow opens us up to an appeal of some sort to a higher authority that-
Well, he can always appeal regardless of what we do today.
But the harshness of the penalty isn't grounds for that by itself.
Um, I, if I were his attorney, you know, they'd probably take a look at that, but I, I personally don't think it would be grounds for an appeal.
I'm, I would be comfortable with, with a longer than 12-month period, I-
I, I think that's fine.
And, you know, if Dan wants to suggest three years, I'm fine with three years.
I would, I would be comfortable with three years.
Yeah, I could do that. A quick question, Bruce, do you have any ballpark what the amount would have been that he needed to pay in licensing fees for all the tickets? If he, I don't think it's $5,000, is it?
The tickets were valued at $5,000.
About $400 a piece or something.
No, 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 I mean, I mean, if he had gotten all the licenses, how much would he have paid in license fees rather than paying fines?
He paid more in violations than he would have paid in permits.
No, right? I just wonder whether he's just not, rather than of ill will, it's just a little cuckoo. I mean, how about-
That's not a legal term, though.
Not a legal term at all, no.
So I think we have gravitated towards a proposal for a three-year of allowing him the opportunity after a full three years has transpired. So, Dan, why don't I ask you to make that a specific proposal, and then we'll go back down the group?
Perfect. I would propose that we, with, he is not able to reapply for a business license in the town of Kiowa for a period of three years from the date of the revocation of this current business license.
Okay. Comments?
I support that, I'm fine with that.
I support that.
All right, we have a proposal, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. So we have, based on my understanding, listened to the evidence from the town and our Building Services Group, we've not had the party take advantage of their opportunity here that they had to provide their arguments in case, and as a result of that, we have agreed to revoke, to reaffirm and revoke his license with the, with no ability to reapply for a license until three years transpires from today. Is that-
Yes.
But I believe we've just done-
And, and one other point that, that was raised, we're going to, is council okay with allowing him to complete existing projects? That I would have us staff to prepare that list, and I can incorporate that into the written decision.
I, I am, I, I think you, you got to let the homeowner, now, the homeowner can be informed that he's lost his license, but midway through a thing, I don't know that I'd be wild if I, especially if I liked the guy, thought he was doing a quality job. I, I'd be hesitant to whack that.
But I think that, but the property owner has to be informed.
I think the property owner should be informed, those addresses that we get, and let the property owner decide, but, boy, I, I think, we're not here to punish the homeowner.
No, I, I do think though, if he's allowed to, if the owner agrees and he's allowed to continue, they have to meet inspections. If they don't meet inspections-
Oh, of course.
...fails, right.
Of course. And in fact, you may want to, because I'm concerned about the mechanism at the gate. I, I almost wonder if, if you could make it as a condition for the homeowner to continue, for the homeowner to have to call in the past? Because otherwise, you really have no mechanism at the gate to stop him.
True. It's always beautiful or something like that.
All right. So have we satisfactorily carried out our obligation on this item?
I believe so. What I will do is I will work with staff to prepare that written decision, and y'all have an, obviously, let y'all have a look at it, do a draft, and, and we'll get it to final, and we'll get it issued, in accordance with our ordinance.
All right.
And there'll be an addendum to that notice as to the addresses involved?
It will be part of the order.
And will there, will there also be part of the order that says the homeowner will be, will be informed of this in writing? Is that how we would inform to the homeowner?
Yeah.
I would, I would want it in writing, I would like, I would like a written record that, I don't want a owner later to say, you didn't, I continued to do work, I had problems, and you never told me that-
Exactly, and the homeowner would be responsible for calling in a pass for the completion of the work, and you can work with Kika to make sure that they are, their barcode or whatever it is they've got is revoked or whatever terminology they do.
Is there, this is just lack of knowledge, there is no responsibility for the homeowner to ascertain that a builder he hires has a license, is that correct?
There is a requirement for every homeowner to ensure that a contractor's license is warranted, or has a license and permit, two different things.
Okay, does, does a homeowner have a requirement to ascertain that a project he's hired someone for has indeed a, a permit?
No, that's all directly on the contract.
Interesting.
I have had contractors ask me whether they wanted the permit, with a permit price or the, without a permit.
Really?
Yeah, oh, yeah. They're usually cheaper without a permit.
You've always taken a permit price, correct?
In which case, my response was, do you know what I do? Anyway.
All right, let's, it's been late, thank you very much to all of you for helping us through that process. Let's go to Town Administrator's Report, Stephanie?
Well, I'll keep this shorter, thanks, Ed.
No, no, go for it, Stephanie.
Well, I was just, I was gonna have staff, I don't know if you still, I mean, I don't know if you still like, you know, would like to do this.
You are bringing in takeout pretty soon, right?
Yeah, that's right. I was gonna have Derota and then Brian give an update, if you still want the update on the business license law that passed in Columbia? Okay, okay, well, it won't be long, but anyways, I would, I was gonna give you all just, what, my portion I was gonna do was just in regards to Judge Stroud. I think as the mayor already said, he kind of laid out some of the process. What I'll do is work with Stephanie tomorrow, and when she does her next E-Blast, we'll put something out letting the residents know that we will have an opening. In terms of the state of South Carolina, for a municipal judge, you don't have to be a lawyer, you don't even have to even understand the law.
Oh, I'm perfect. I qualify on both counts.
You qualify.
And I love to judge.
Love him, I know, I love him too. And you do not have to be a resident of the municipality that you serve, but we're gonna put together some requirements we send out. But one of the things that you will have to do is that you have to go through a, if you're not licensed in the state of South, well, you have to go through a one-week training course in Columbia, and then take an exam and at least score 70 out of 100. If you're licensed in the state of South Carolina, you still have to take the training, but you don't have to take the exam. And then after that, you're required to take annually, to, to take basically courses, you can do that in person or online. So those are the only requirements through the state. Talking to Judge Stroud, one of the things that he recommended is that when we put out, that we're looking for a judge that we put, that we would like for someone to have a legal background, preferably in litigation or trial court, and we'll do that. We'll also let them know that there is some required training, because I understand that the last time we were looking maybe for Judge Stroud, that because some residents didn't realize they had to do the training, they kind of backed out and said, well, I want to be the judge, but I don't want to have to go through any training. So, so we will make sure that information is put out, and we'll put a timeline in terms of, of when we will like to receive letters of interest. I'm thinking that it will probably be by the end of this month, or maybe the first week of November, we'll, we'll see how it goes. And that's all that I have, I'll have Derota come up and quickly just talk about, which is just a brief kind of update in terms of the business license change in the state to make it more standardized, and so, she can just give a brief update, and then I'll just have-
Can I go like the voice and means?
You can just do it right here, it'll take y'all but two, two or three minutes.
I do want on the judges, a couple of things we talked about, I want to run by you on. I do expect that we could see five or six people come forward interested. I have found over time that lawyers love to end their career as being judges, because they get to be called judge. And so I think we will have, we could have four to five people interested. Stephanie and I talked about the question of non-resident, and our thought was that in the initial communication, we wouldn't arbitrarily knock out non-residents so that we could at least see the full potential pool, but at the same time, most likely, if, when we get into the selection process, if we have fairly equal qualified individuals, that our preference would likely be for the resident rather than the non-resident, so that we know we don't have to deal with the person who says, oh yeah, I can come down there once, you know, and then they can't do it. So we weren't gonna try to screen it out initially, but at the same time recognize that at the end of the day, the, all things equal, our residency would be our preference. Any- No, that's logical. And then what our thought was, if, this kind of came, we, we had talked about, if we were not having a contested election, then we may have proposed working on the basis of trying to short, get this- of trying to short, get this shortlisted, go through the interviews, and potentially even pick the candidate before this council is done. I think now that we have a contested election, what we probably will do, and we've talked about, is at least try to do some of the initial selection process, get the, let's assume we have three or four candidates, try to narrow it down to a smaller group of two or three candidates, and then we would let the next council actually make the selection process, because ultimately, they've got to live with that job. So, in light of the fact that we have a contested election, we wouldn't try to choose the judge before, before December, but we will continue, we will put a process in place to at least kind of vet them and, and see, make sure we got, you know, at least a good candidate or two, if that sounds.
It does.
All right.
Okay, so, last month, few weeks ago, the Senate, the state has passed a new ordinance that pretty much standardizes the business licenses among all jurisdictions in the state. The main goal was to streamline for businesses, especially those that do business within different jurisdictions that have different due dates. And, so that's going to help with that. The, the ordinance is going to be effective January 2000, January 1, 2022. However, one item or one change that is going to affect us now with the new renewals is the licenses are going to run from May 1st through April 30th. So, compared to right now, it's on the calendar year. So, this year, when businesses are going to be renewing the licenses, they're going to get a license for 16 months rather than 12 months. They, the license is now going to expire on December 31st, 2021, but April 30th, 2022, and the late fee will kick in on May 1st. So that's the main, you know, main change that will affect this current renewal season.
The other, correctly, the other option would have been to, in '22, do a four-month.
But that's a lot of administration work for, yeah. Yes. So, there is some other changes in this ordinance, that mostly the changes are to, towards the contractors, how they can report their revenues. Now they can do, right now, what they do, they join a whole contract, and then they, subs, apply for licenses, and it would, the new one, they're going to have a choice. That they can either pay for the whole contract and all their subs, or choose that the subs apply for their own licenses, and they just for their part. So, that's one big change. There is also another change, because right now, we report revenues from a calendar year, and even the businesses that run on fiscal years, they have to do on a calendar year. Right now, we're going to give them a choice. If they report to, their taxes on fiscal, fiscal year, they can continue doing it. So it's just easier for audit purposes to pretty much match the numbers what they're reporting to us to what they report on the taxes. But, there is some other little items that I'm going to look at. They want to, we want to make sure that all our codes are standard with other jurisdictions, and we don't need to do anything with the fees. However, I was planning on looking at our fees to, to see if we comparable with other jurisdictions and see if there's any desire to, to change them or, you know, look at that. So, that's pretty much it. Oh, yes. So, now the state, there will be another option to make it, like you said, the main thing was to streamline it. So now the business, the state will have a portal when the business can apply for license, and just choose jurisdiction and apply right there, and then the state will remit the money to the jurisdiction that was chosen. So, there will be no fees. The money should be delivered to us the next day. So there is no, you know, revenue decrease there or shortage, but we will give them an option. That will be an optional for a business to either do it through the state portal or our own.
What was the logic, if there was some, for April 30th?
Well, I think because a lot of businesses claim that they don't have, they don't have numbers ready, because they don't have their taxes ready. Very often, bigger businesses even, you know, get extensions. So for them, even April.
Different entities were on different dates, which made it hard for a business who operated in multiple...
Yeah.
But, I've put a bug in Derota's ear, and I said, I won't be here, I'll put it in everybody else's is. You know, today, of course, we allow a late period. We provide a couple of months to get your license renewed, after which you get fined. Well, and the reason for that was always recognizing that people did sometimes need a couple of months to get their tax returns or whatever. Well, now that this is moving to April 30th, there, in my estimation, is no longer any reason for
Yes, yes.
a late period whatsoever. That whole concept that you get a month or two months or whatever to
Yeah.
should go away.
That's correct.
Because you have to...
Yeah, grace period is gone, yeah, May 1st, that's, and that's what the... Yes, sir. And the, the, the ordinance calls for it. The, the penalty is kicking in on May 1st, so yes, you were right.
Oh, don't you hate saying that?
No, I love it. So, yeah. We can, you know, we can talk about it a little more if any questions, the voice and means still. Yeah, to, for, yeah. That's correct. Okay.
One last from staff.
Okay. Get your attention.
I appreciate it, Dan. It's not, that's all I need. That's all I need. He can disseminate.
I know, I'm trying. He's the boss.
Good evening. So, quick update on the parkway. As you all know, there's just a couple, a couple, well, one isolated area, two different kind of projects, if you will, to, that just need dressing up, and, and we should be able to close this, close this out as far as the paving goes. The birdbathing issue in the, at the ingress to the Andel Track, that is going to be, that's one issue that needs to get just a quick mill out and repaved so that it's graded, so it's, it's not ponding in that area. And then also, the, the bike path, there was an issue with how it was graded. It's a, it's graded a little bit stronger in some areas than, than what our tolerance is accepting that we've come up with, so the, the contractor's going to come in and smooth that out. And then, along with that, part of the, the landscaping project, we're going to add in some vegetative buffer there, and, and we're also looking at, at a, a lower fence idea to, to have that, that, that separation between the turn lane and the bike path right there. So if there's any, any questions about, so the, the contractor is working with the design team right now. There, we got the As Built survey done, so we can see what's actually out there, and that's getting compared to the design, so we can kind of see where we need to come in and what corrections we need to make to those two areas. If, if there's anything, any questions about, about the dressing up of that area?
I'm glad you're hitting the bird path, which you call it.
Yes, yes. It is a distraction. I mean, there's nowhere for that water to go. Takes a month to evaporate if we have a good rain. So anyway, then tomorrow, we've got a walkthrough with the landscape contractor and the, and the design team, outdoor spatial design. We're going to walk the parkway, look at areas that we need to hit first as far as demolition goes, and demolition being where we're going to pull up plants, where we're going to pull up sod, and check out where we need to do some major irrigation work. So we're going to do that walkthrough tomorrow and come up with that plan, because the contractor's ready to come in and start doing that work next week. And, and per, per his email, he, he says that he still anticipates being done on the regular timeline, which will be December this year. He, he'll be ready to, ready to get out of here. So, everything as far as the timeline for the landscape is, is still on, even though we, we've gotten pushed back a couple, couple of weeks. He's going to be working through the, through Saturdays on, on his dime, as he explained, and then I guess take Sundays off. But, we'll be out there monitoring that, making sure that that's going to plan. He's got everything contract grown already, I mean, it's ready to come from the nursery over and be, be put into the parkway.
All right. Committee and council updates, Dan?
Yeah, I just want to mention one thing from the Arts Board and the Arts Council met this past week. And importantly, as you could understand, most of the events that we sponsor, well, all of them were canceled through the end of the year because of the virus. Then in January, we have events scheduled, but what the council has decided is that on a three-month advance notice, so for now, they've looked at the January events and have it, have decided whether or not to continue or to have them. The events in January have been canceled. There was only one, it was a big jazz concert, and it's too many people, we can't do it. So then, every month now, they're going to work three months in advance, look at the schedule, look at the venue, look at the number of people, look at where we are with the virus, and make another decision. So we're going to tell this, we're going to put it in town notes and stuff, but alert the community, so they know what's going on. And be sure to be telling people three months in advance where we see.
Chris? Anything from our town attorney?
No, sir.
All right. We have no citizens' comments? And this is the longest council meeting we have ever had.
It's close. We had one that was very close. We were close.
For this council, it has been a while.
We started on 1/30.
But I have to say, I've enjoyed immensely the opportunity to actually get back around the table with you all. It's been nice. Rather than sitting in my, wherever I sit. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Full move.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, thank you all for your patience and hard work.